Sergeant, ready to go?
Good afternoon and welcome to today's New York City Council hearings for the Committee on Parks and Recreation, joined with Environmental Protection. At this time, we ask you to silence all cell phones and electronic devices to minimize disruptions throughout the hearing. If you have testimony you wish to submit for the record, you may do so via email, testimony@council.myc.gov. Once again, that is testimony@council.myc.gov. At any time throughout the hearing, we ask that you please do not approach today. We thank you for your cooperation. Chairs, we are ready to begin.
Thank you. Thank you, one and all. Good afternoon. I am Jim Gennaro, Chair of the Committee on Environmental Protection, Resiliency and Waterfronts, and today, together with Chair Krishnan of the Committee on Parks and Recreation, we'll be holding an oversight hearing on New York City's climate resiliency efforts. The hearing will examine how DEP and Department of Parks and Recreation use the city's parks and wetlands to mitigate the effects of climate change, such as flooding and heat. The hearing will also address the preservation of the city's wetlands, MOC-EJ's Climate Strong Communities Program, and the city's efforts to apply for state and federal climate resiliency grant programs. That's important, that last one. We'll also be hearing Intro 1069, sponsored by myself, in relation to requiring testing at city waterfronts for harmful substances in the water and the posting of results online, as well as Rezo 608, also sponsored by me, which calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the Governor to sign legislation to create a permanent citywide voluntary buyout program to mitigate flood risk. Green infrastructure projects are integral to New York City's efforts to develop a healthier, more resilient, and more livable city in the face of climate change. One great example of this is New York City's tree stock. Across the city, 800,000 street trees, out of a total of over 7 million trees in the city, intercept over 1 billion gallons of stormwater every year, reduce net CO2 emissions by an estimated 600,000-plus tons, and provide an annual value of approximately $109 million via stormwater uptake, energy reduction due to cooler temperatures, and reduced pollution. Our local wetland ecosystems help improve water quality by consuming excess nutrients and trapping sediments and runoff, serve as vital carbon sinks, provide flood control services, and help reduce flooding from coastal storm surge. According to one study, wetlands helped avoid an estimated $625 million in direct flood damages across the Northeast U.S. from superstorm Sandy. Despite this, over the course of its history, New York City has lost approximately 85% of its original salt marsh habitat and 99% of its freshwater wetland habitat, with approximately only 5,650 acres of wetland remaining. We did something about that in 2008, 2009. We had a wetlands transfer bill where everything, all city-owned wetlands, yes, Samar members, all city-owned wetlands that were owned by city agencies or EDC or any other city entity, city government or government corporation entity, that was wetlands but not owned by the Department of Parks. We transferred most of those to the Parks Department for permanent protection, but that doesn't give us wetlands back. It just keeps more wetlands from going away. So we've been doing what we can, but much work remains. Oh, okay. That's the next part of my statement talks about that. All right. No, no, it doesn't. Something else. Okay. Yeah, I should read this more closely before I get up here, right? All in favor? Okay. Okay, thank you, Lincoln. "That is why in 2009, along with my colleagues and the Council, I passed Local Law 31, requiring the Mayor's Office of Long-Term Planning and Sustainability, now known the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice, to draft a comprehensive wetlands protection strategy for the city, the overall goals of which were to conserve, protect, enhance, restore, and expand the city's wetlands, and to standardize its approach to wetlands management." This law requires a drafting and publication of a report to be submitted to the Commissioner of DEP and the Commissioner of Parks and Recreation no later than July 15, 2009, with an update published no later than July 15, every second year thereafter. Since then, meaning since the law was passed, only one report has been published in relation to this law in 2012. In 2016 and 2021, the Natural Areas Conservancy, in conjunction with the Parks Department, released the Wetlands Management Framework for New York City, but it is unclear if those documents are meant to satisfy the requirements of Local Law 31. This reporting requirement created by Local Law is not a suggestion, it is the law. Again, this is not this administration. This is another administration, so, you know. This administration must do its due diligence in publishing and submitting the required report in a timely manner and not whenever it deems convenient. But that's not this administration. I would like to thank the great committee staff who have done such great work over the years, Committee Councils Samar Swanson and Claire McLaughlin, Policy Analyst Ricky Chola and Andrew Boren, Financial Analyst Andrew Lane Lawless, finally, my Legislative Director, Naby Cor, for all of their hard work. Let me recognize the members of the Environmental Protection, Resiliency, and Waterfronts Committee who are here. Councilmember Holden, Councilmember Wrestler, Councilmember Menon, Councilmember Nurse, Councilmember Hanks is joining us on Zoom. Before I turn it over to my co-chair, just, you know, a little bit of housekeeping, there's this phenomenon that's been creeping up in some council hearings lately where witnesses ask questions of the panel. We don't answer questions. So we're here to hear from you. We ask you questions. So any questions directed at us will be ruled out of order by me. And we also want the testimony, we have a lot of witnesses, to be on topic. You know, we understand that people are passionate about funding for parks. This is not a budget hearing. You know, this council stands squarely in favor of, you know, tree canopy development. That's why in the last stated meeting a couple of days ago, we passed the Botchard Bill to require the 30% canopy. Of course, the challenge is to figure out how to pay for that, and a lot of people are here to talk about that. This is not a budget hearing. So it's just like, we get that the 30% number is really important. You know, we'll let folks make their point, but generally speaking, we want to stay on topic. We have the oversight topic, we've got the bill, and we've got the Rezo, and we want focused testimony on those. So I was just a bad guy, Shaker, so you didn't have to say any of that stuff, okay? And with that, it is my great privilege to recognize my esteemed co-chair, Chair Shaker Krishnan, Chair of the Parks Committee, I recognize Chair Krishnan.
Thank you so much, Chair Gennaro. It's an honor to co-chair this hearing with you, and good afternoon, everyone. I am Councilmember Shaker Krishnan, Chair of the Committee on Parks and Recreation, and I'd like to thank my fellow co-chair, Councilmember Gennaro, for agreeing to hold this joint hearing today, which unfortunately comes with very good timing, given the recent events in New York City just a couple of weeks ago when it comes to our climate. The climate crisis is here. We all know that all too well, and painfully so, and its effects threaten the well-being of all New Yorkers. One of the more immediate effects, which has been particularly damaging to the city this year, as we know, is flooding. These flooding events, most recently including Tropical Storm Ophelia, were rain events that laid bare the inadequacy of the city's infrastructure to handle massive rainfall. Once again, large areas of the city that had never seen significant flooding before were shockingly underwater. And once again, this past summer, where a multitude of severe weather events have occurred throughout the world, this has set a new unfortunate milestone for being the hottest summer on record. Over and over again, the storms, the flooding, the events that are considered once in 100 years are happening once every year, every couple of years, and it's a signal of how urgent the climate crisis is right here in our city. We are a city surrounded by water, and so the necessity for New York to be ever prepared for these increasingly harsh storms is growing more and more important. Despite these climate change events, however, there is still time, though the clock is ticking, to prepare and adapt our infrastructure to better handle what will continue to come our way in the future. Our focus at today's joint hearing will be on how the city's parks and wetlands can best be adapted to mitigate the effects of climate change, such as flooding and extreme heat. There is still time to prepare and adapt our infrastructure to better handle what will continue to come our way in the future, particularly by increasing the use of green infrastructure and making our parks more resilient. The city's green space can be adapted to expand the resiliency features, such as through the use of expanding the Green Streets Program, building more rain gardens in areas that are starved of green space, broadening the reach of park features to their surrounding neighborhoods, building more parks and playgrounds with bioswales, green features, and permeable surfacing, converting unused or abandoned land into green space, and of course, maintaining and expanding the city's tree stock. There are important pieces of legislation that we've passed in this council to address these issues and expand green space where none has existed before. On top of that, just last week, our city council and the week before passed historic legislation to invest in and expand our tree canopy. And of course, we've also looked at ways to increase and improve water safety in our city too, which is just as much a part of the climate crisis as every other emergency that we face. All of those things are crucial, but I also want to call attention to the fact that we will not be able to make our city environmentally resilient until we invest in our park system the way it should be. And we will not have a park system that reflects in resources the value it holds for all of us, from a climate standpoint to our health and well-being. We will not have a park system with the resources that reflect that value until we achieve at least 1% of our city budget for parks. Something that we need to do, not only because it is crucial for our city, it is crucial for climate change, but it is also our city catching up with every other major city in the United States. Our parks are essential to our health and well-being. The Parks Department has been heavily part of this process, specifically to address climate change, specifically when they developed resiliency guidelines in November 2017 entitled "Design and Planning for Flood Resiliency: Guidelines for NYC Parks," which is part of the broader Plan NYC framework. The guidelines serve as a manual for planners, designers, and communities to reference while planning and developing coastally resilient parks and waterfront spaces. In particular, the guidelines discuss certain beach and boardwalk best practices, including the development of a plan for necessary beach nourishment to ensure the best possible performance during and after a storm, elevating boardwalks to be higher than the 100-year flood plain, and the usage of concrete planks set on top of concrete and steel piles to create stronger and more resilient boardwalks. I'm curious to see how this has informed the process by which the Parks Department has developed and renovated its various properties to become more resilient, and whether recent storms have altered in any way how the department thinks about its resiliency planning. I'd like to ensure this joint hearing explores and clarifies some points relating to parks and resiliency as well, including how federal funding from the Infrastructure and Jobs Act and the Inflation Reduction Act are being allocated to enhance parks' resiliency work. This federal funding plays a crucial role in supporting our parks and green spaces. I'd also like to hear more about the role that parks will play in the Climate Strong Community Project, and the progress that has been made in implementing practices from the Wetlands Management Framework, and also how parks will adapt to, as I mentioned before, the unacceptable budget cuts that Mayor Adams has recently proposed, in a way that not only cuts from our parks' vital services, but also to understand how they will affect any resiliency projects. The time to act is now. We must urgently work to address this climate crisis and invest in the parts of our infrastructure, our parks, our playgrounds, our coastlines, to fortify and protect our city from the worsening climate crisis. We are already behind the ball, and so we cannot afford any delay in implementing resiliency projects that are crucial to our being able to withstand the worst effects of the climate crisis. Here too, our parks are on the front lines when it comes to this work. Thank you to everyone who has joined today, for members of the administration, for your testimony, and for our members of the public and advocates who are testifying to, and for your participation in this hearing. I'd like to recognize our colleagues who are here today as part of this committee. Councilmember Holden, Councilmember Lee, Councilmember Marte, Councilmember Menon, Councilmember Wrestler, Councilmember Ung, Councilmember Carr, and Councilmember Brooks Powers. Thank you, and I will turn it over to our committee council to swear in today's witnesses.
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth today?
You may begin.
All right. Good afternoon, and thank you, Chair Gennaro, Chair Krishnan, members of the Environmental Protection and Parks and Recreation Committees. My name is Ridd Agarwal, Chairman, Chief Climate Officer of New York City and Commissioner of the Department of Environmental Protection, and I am joined today by Elijah Hutchinson, our new Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice, Merritt Larson, Assistant Commissioner of Natural Resources and Planning at the Department of Parks. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today on New York City's climate resilience efforts. As Chair Krishnan just said, climate change is here. We have all witnessed its impact as recently as two weeks ago with Tropical Storm Ophelia. Since day one, the Adams Administration has been focused on better preparing the city for the impacts of climate change, including creating my role. As part of my role, I oversee MOC-EJ, which leads the city's efforts to ensure New York City is reducing its emissions while also protecting New Yorkers from the intensifying impacts of climate change. With a focus on equity and public health, MOC-EJ works to make buildings efficient and resilient, ensure infrastructure is climate-ready, transform streets in the public realm into living open spaces, and make energy clean and resilient. And I'm particularly excited about the addition of Executive Director Hutchinson to the office. He previously led Coastal Resilience and Greenway Initiatives as Vice President for Waterfronts at the New York City Economic Development Corporation. His work and ideas will be central to this city's climate policy, including resilience, and I am pleased to have him as my colleague. I will depart from the text here, because in putting together what we thought was a reasonably comprehensive but still high-level summary of all we're doing, it came to 5,000 words, and rather than read all of it to you, I leave it to you to read. I will give you a couple of high points and then conclude, but I do want you to know, we're doing a lot. A lot of it is shaped, and Chair Krishnan, you know, alluded to this, I think relatively few New Yorkers appreciate that in 2020, the National Climate Assessment re-categorized New York City from a continental weather zone to the subtropical climate zone. Right? So literally, our climate has changed. This is not something that's coming down the pike. It has, in fact, already happened. And that is not coincidentally why, at about the same time, we started to see a significant change in flooding. But there is a lot that we are doing to play catch-up, as I think the chairman, as both chairmen mentioned. We are working on coastal resilience as part of Plan YC, in addition to continuing the work that was undertaken in the last two administrations in the aftermath of Hurricane Sandy, and continuing to work very closely with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers on the Harbor and Tributary Study. We have actually recognized that it is time to create a permanent home within city government for the multi-decade work that it will take to create coastal resilience for New York City. We decided that DEP is the correct home for that, and so actually, I'm pleased to say that very soon, we will begin the process of standing up a new Bureau of Coastal Resilience. I think there is likely to be a need, and Chair Gennaro and I have discussed the fact that at some point, we will probably seek out your collective assistance in legislating that as part of the agency's formal role, but it is something that we are not waiting to get started on. Starting last year, we also at DEP began to undertake a broad look at what it will require, in fact, to bring the city's stormwater management systems up to handle this new reality that we face. There was some very good work done in the immediate aftermath of Hurricane Ida by the de Blasio Administration. We have incorporated virtually everything from that into the plans that we are now working on through Plan YC and others. In fact, we recently did a tally, and basically 95% of what was in the New Normal Report is either completed or in progress, or it has been replaced by something that is in Plan YC that accomplishes the same goal. So there was not something that we walked away from. It is an evolutionary process that frankly expands as we get smarter about the task. Last year, my agency with the mayor released two programs. One explicitly about short-term flood response. We called it Rainfall Ready. I'm pleased we've worked with a number of you all to use your offices to help do things like distribute flood barriers and make residents aware of their flood risk. Part of Rainfall Ready was actually publishing flood maps that show precisely by borough, block, and lot level, the flood risk that each address in New York City faces. That allowed us, for example, to target the 1,600 most flood-prone residential addresses, to which we proactively reached out to offer them flood barriers and information about flood insurance and things like that. However, the reality is that changing infrastructure, whether it's green infrastructure on the surface or gray infrastructure underground, is both very expensive and very long-term. I'm naturally impatient, and my staff knows that. I keep asking, why is this a multi-year planning process? And as I have come to appreciate what goes into it, I have come to appreciate just how difficult it is to change something as powerful as water in a place as crowded and complex and expensive to do work in as New York City. So one of our sad realities is, as I have said many times, the climate is changing faster than our infrastructure can keep up. And among the things we need to do, and I'll come back to this, is figure out how we, as a city, can in fact make our processes faster and more capacious so we can do more things at once, even if we can't do all things faster. Among the things that we have done, and again, there's a lot of detail in the written testimonies we've made, in the written testimony, we've made significant progress and continue to on Blue Belts. We have great ambitions for the Blue Belt Program, well beyond Staten Island, even though it's a Staten Island native, of course. We are working on Cloud Burst, and we are in fact ahead of schedule with more Cloud Burst projects that we are working on than we're committed to in the New Normal Report at the end of 2021, so we're very pleased by those. As I think many of you know, back last year, DEP implemented the Unified Stormwater Rule, which requires large properties, when they are constructed upon or when significant changes happen on a given parcel, that they have to begin to manage stormwater on-site. Any stormwater managed on-site prevents it from flowing into overtaxed sewers during a heavy rainstorm, and therefore, that directly prevents flooding. In addition, in most parts of the city, that kind of work also reduces combined sewer overflows, which contributes to the clean harbor that we all know and care about. We've made significant progress over the last two years with the FloodNet Sensor Program, which I was certainly looking at all day long on September 29, and I would imagine some of you may have been as well. It is far from complete, and among the things we have been doing consistently, I will not say actually in response to that storm, because we were doing it well before that, is trying to figure out how we can change that program and its details or augment it so that it can be built out more quickly. We are currently in year two of a five-year build, but that is making a lot of headway already, and actually, I think it was quite useful on September 29 to be able to see what was going on. As I think Chair Krishnan alluded to, the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice has already kicked off the early planning work around Climate Strong Communities, which is our neighborhood-level effort at engaging with communities to do multi-hazard planning. And we are working on a voluntary buyout program, which is another one of these things like the Bureau of Coastal Resilience, where it takes a while to figure out the institutional issues. It's not just about having the money, although buyouts in New York City are going to be breathtakingly expensive, but it is also about how you do the institution so that legally, we can conduct transactions that are frankly very unlike the transactions that the city's land acquisition policies and practices are designed for. You know, just think about the question of how you pay fair market value for a property that has been destroyed. Legally, we have to pay only fair market value. Right? So there's a lot of institutional work that we have to put in place right now, and MOC-EJ, in conjunction with several other agencies, is leading that planning work, and we're optimistic about where that will go. One final thing before I move on is heat, and I think you both, both Chair Gennaro and Chair Krishnan, mentioned the fact that flooding is not our only risk, that as part of being a subtropical city, we now have a significant heat program, and as I have said on many occasions, we are keenly aware of the fact that despite the terrible losses we suffered during Hurricane Ida and Hurricane Sandy, heat over the last decade is still the way climate change has killed most New Yorkers. Right? That we think more than 350 New Yorkers have died as an excess number over previous patterns due to the higher heat levels that we've experienced during the summer over the last decade. It's one of the reasons that this administration has committed to work towards, and this is actually going to be extraordinarily difficult to figure out, but to work towards a maximum indoor temperature. The reality is, the vast majority of bedrooms in New York City have air conditioning. Those who don't live in affordable housing, those who don't live in NYCHA, those who don't live in places where the economics of it are not going to be easy to figure out, but it is something that we are committed to. And I will also make the point that we cannot stop thinking about mitigation, that we have to make sure that we work to reduce our carbon emissions, because the first thing you do when you find yourself in a hole is stop digging. And we've And we've got to help make this problem not get any worse than it already is. And that's among the reasons that I'm very proud of the proposal that this administration has put out for how to implement Local Law 97. We think it is thoughtful, we think it is actually very aggressive. We also think it is correctly designed to work with and take into account the needs of building owners. And among the things that I hope we can have help with from members of the city council is ensuring that as the State Public Service Commission defines the way it will use the next $5 billion of systems benefit charge money that is going to be raised from the electric bills of New Yorkers and programmed, that they use it in a way that directly helps buildings comply with Local Law 97, which is, I think, one of the most important opportunities we have and one that I am desperately worried we will let slip away if the state and Con Edison do not choose to work with us in a collaborative way. Another area where we could use your help, and I know Chairman Gennaro, you've been tremendously helpful in this respect already, and Chair Krishnan, you alluded to this, is around New York City getting its fair share of federal and state money. The reality is, we do not. We do not get our fair share of federal and state money because in fact, a large portion of the bipartisan infrastructure law funding is put through the state. And unfortunately, New York State has decided to apply rules to how it disperses that money, particularly with respect to DEP infrastructure that could contribute towards the overall effort for stormwater resilience that categorically excludes municipalities of more than 300,000 people from applying for those grant funds. We think that decision, purely an administrative decision, it's neither regulation nor it is law, is going to cost New York City $1 billion in federal funding that it would otherwise be eligible for. And I know the committee has put forward some questions about the Environmental Bond Act, $4.2 billion for environmental efforts, including, for example, a quarter billion dollars dedicated for voluntary buyouts. The state has not put out guidelines for the vast majority of that money yet. We do not know whether it will be equitably distributed, but I do know that New York City is roughly 60% of the tax base, and so New York City residents will pay 60% of that $4.2 billion, and we have to make very clear to Albany that we should be able to get our fair share. I will return now to the last two pages of my written testimony, but all of the things I've covered are in there. And by the way, actually, I will also say to Intro 1069, of course, we're very concerned about water quality, whether it's in the harbor, which my agency pays very close attention to, or in other water bodies. We have a very extensive testing program across multiple agencies right now that is primarily driven by the state, both Department of Health and the Department of Environmental Conservation. And we certainly share the bill's intention to be able to know what is going on in our water and assure New Yorkers that it is safe. We would look forward to working with the committee to ensure that this bill does not add unnecessary costs without creating value or wind up working at cross purposes to the practices that we have already overseen by our state regulators. So we're very happy to work with you on that. I'll conclude with a couple of points here. Major physical projects, and I'll go back to the written text, major physical projects take a significant amount of time. Typically, one to three years for planning and design, one to two years for procurement, and from one to four years of construction. To reduce this time would require changes to several processes, such as environmental review, ULP when acquisitions are required, and procurement rules. DEP has invested significantly in improving our procurement with great success. We have reduced a nearly two-year procurement cycle a year and a half ago down to just one year, just one year. Further, we have improved internal processes to increase our commitment rate for capital projects. One of my big disappointments of fiscal year '22 was that we achieved only a 69% commitment rate for the year, which meant that in that fiscal year, DEP left nearly half a billion dollars in capital on the table unspent. Through a significant whole-of-agency effort, we are proud to report that for the first time in a decade, DEP achieved our capital commitment target in fiscal year '23, reaching 103% of our $2.3 billion capital plan. In fact, we committed $2.4 billion in new capital projects, a year-on-year increase of $800 million in new projects breaking ground for construction or starting into design. We've also contributed to the Capital Process Reform Task Force convened by Mayor Adams and Controller Lander. Last year, the task force released a set of recommendations, including using price adjustment allowance to offset volatile commodity markets, expanding work allowances to reduce change order approvals, and amending procurement laws and regulations. Also significantly, the task force has made recommendations for the city to adopt alternative project delivery mechanisms such as progressive design-build, and has proposed that the DDC become an authority. We strongly support these recommendations, as these efforts will speed up capital projects, reduce costs, and increase the city's capacity to address emerging needs. And I will just say, I think those are some of the things, as we look to do this work, we need help in clearing the obstacles to getting work done. You know, projects face the same delays. It doesn't matter whether it's a resilience project, a water main project, whatever it is, you all face the same sort of delays. Anything we can do to speed up our ability to deliver capital projects is going to make the city more resilient, and anything we do that slows that down is going to hinder our ability to achieve resilience. There aren't a lot of easy ways to speed up an individual project, but we also face constraints on how many we can take on at once. This is basically a function of DEP's planning and engineering capacity and DDC's engineering and contracting capacity. I would welcome any help the city council can offer in figuring out how to increase DEP's and DDC's capacity to deliver projects, or how the city's design, procurement, and construction timetables can be speeded up. Climate work is generational, and because of that, there are trade-offs. For example, we must balance water rate affordability with our resilience considerations. Stormwater projects are breathtakingly expensive. Starting last year, DEP has been working on a set of example projects to understand by extrapolation what it would take to create true stormwater resilience across the city. We expect to have a bit to say on that later this year and much more to say on that next spring. In 2021, my predecessor estimated it would require a cost of $100 billion, which would require water rates to go up by about 500%. 500% increase in water rates to pay for something like that. Depending on the level of stormwater resilience we want, we may have to brace for dramatic increases in water bills. And this is not theoretical. As we at DEP begin work towards our fiscal year '25 capital plan, it would be helpful to know what council members think about how much to invest, given that all of our investments in stormwater resilience are passed along in the water bill unless we can get state or federal money. We must also consider the importance of affordable housing to resilience work. Three key strategies for resilience, requiring air conditioners, protecting people who live in basement apartments, and the voluntary mobility program to remove people who live in at-risk properties, are likely to directly reduce the city's affordable housing supply. We cannot have both affordable housing and resilience unless we dramatically increase the creation of new housing across the city. And we need to recognize that some homes are impossible to protect from flooding. MOC-EJ has been collaborating closely with the Department of City Planning on City of Yes zoning for housing opportunity, which was kicked off in September, which includes dealing with the issues of basement apartments and flood risk, and the considerations of climate hazards when citing and building new housing. We have worked closely with our colleagues at the Parks Department, working to explore opportunities for Blue Belts for stormwater resilience and coastal protection on the large portion of the city's waterfront that is parkland. But the reality is that there will be times where parks uses and resilience uses are at odds, or at very least, cause delay and increase cost. Right now, the protection afforded to parkland ensures parks' objectives will take precedence, but that is a reality that we have to acknowledge. I would welcome the council's advice on how to balance these trade-offs. Some of these are political more than technical, so they're very appropriate for electeds to opine on. All New Yorkers, especially those who own their own homes, also must take responsibility for protecting themselves and their property. As I've said many times, for 400 years, New Yorkers have enjoyed a relatively mild climate, but this is no longer the case. The city can and should and will do as much as it can, but tropical rainstorms are difficult to predict, and New Yorkers will need to protect themselves. Anyone who owns a home needs to have flood insurance. Homeowners should disconnect their downspouts from their roofs so they do not connect to the sewer line, which often causes sewer backups inside the home even when the city's sewer is not at capacity. And homeowners need to stop and reverse the paving over of permeable surfaces, which has increased the proportion of stormwater that runs into our sewers during the strongest rains. I know many of you have worked closely with us to raise awareness through events such as rain barrel giveaways, and I very much appreciate those efforts. And I would welcome more ways that the city council could help us encourage New Yorkers to do their part. There is, of course, a lot more in this long testimony. I have a number of colleagues, in addition to the two who are here at the table, to answer your questions. I very much appreciate these two committees coming together to tackle this really difficult but utterly important issue, and I look forward to taking your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think on behalf of all of us, we thank you for your comprehensive testimony and for all the reading material that you provided for us. 5,000 words is a lot, and we appreciate the comprehensive nature of your testimony. I'm going to be very brief. We have, it's always my habit or my practice to, we have members here that want to participate in a significant way, so I'll be very brief in order to open the door for all the members with their great ideas to pose questions. My committee is now, we've been joining my council member Velazquez, very happy to have her here. I just made some notes as you were going through your statement, and I'll just ask a little bit about that. With regard to all that the administration is doing with regard to stormwater, I made notes on the front of your, we got the rainfall ready, cloud burst technology, the Blue Belts, Unified Stormwater Rule, the Flood Net Sensor Program. You know, we had spoken a while ago, you and I, because, you know, I had vision, because way back, I don't know, 2007, whatever it is, the council did, you know, the first comprehensive stormwater management plan, that was really more for, you know, CSOs than it was for street flooding. And that accomplished, you know, and we could go on and on about all the good things that that did accomplish, and so now, we're at stormwater management 2.0, so to speak, where we're really concerned about street flooding. And, you know, I was going to hold back on my bill because there was so much, you know, coming out of DEP and MOC-EJ that was going to be crystallized into a, you know, grand stormwater management plan. And, you know, you made reference to the fact that there'd be something big coming out. I imagine that what that is, is everything all wrapped up in a bow in terms of this is what we want to do regarding stormwater management going forward. And then, my plan was then to, and that would be a great policy document, but then I thought it'd be great to crystallize that into law, which is what we did with Stormwater Management Plan. Does that still seem like a good paradigm to you?
So I think certainly at some point, the idea of legislating a plan may make sense. I would ask if you don't mind that we wait until this first piece of work comes out.
Yeah, I've been waiting.
I will say, and just to manage expectations, it is not going to be everything we want all wrapped up in a bow. It is the first step towards that. I'm thinking about it a bit as kind of an options paper, so we can begin collectively as a city to wrap our brains around what this might actually take, because there are a number of big, big changes that you could imagine needing, and certainly big projects, even if they don't wind up visually being challenging.
Yeah, I just think it's, I think it's a noble, and one, that has worked for you and me and for the council in the city going way back to the first Plan YC, when we took some of the good initiatives of that, and we crystallized them into law, and then, you know, that has, I think, served the city well. So, you know, let me just say that, you know, and I think on behalf of the council, we stand ready as a partner for you to do what seems to make sense in terms of what elements of that new plan should be, you know, reduced to legislation, so that would, you know, carry forward. And I think that, you know, our institution should bear, you know, some of the burden of, you know, doing what we need to do in concert with the administration to let people know how serious this is and how much it's going to cost. And so, you know, we have, this is really an offer to burden share, is really what it is. And so, we certainly appreciate that. And one thing that, and again, with all of the, you know, with all of the focus on flooding from all of the storms, of course, this is a hearing on resiliency. And I know we have the HAT study and all that, that's talking about all a bunch of different things, but what I'm not, what I'm somewhat afraid of having get lost in the, all the flooding that we're talking about, is storm surge. And, you know, this certainly still, you know, was, is, and will be the, you know, the most threatening, clear and present danger, although with the street flooding of late, I think, you know, I think storm surge has kind of like a run for its money with everything that we're doing and all the flooding that we're having. And I have, you know, long been a fan of, you know, storm surge barriers, whatever, people have different ideas about that, but if you could just tell us where we are with regard to, you know, getting out in front of and planning for storm surge, I just, that has to be part of the equation. That is part of the conversation.
Thank you. Yes, and certainly, and so, there's a couple of things there. First of all, there are a number of projects, sorry if I don't cite my list, I'm going to miss a couple, but there are a number of, actually, you've got it? Yeah. So I'll ask Elijah to talk to some of the projects that are going on, but quickly, we've got a set of projects right now that the city is driving in conjunction in many cases, or certainly in coordination with the Army Corps, but where the city is actually leading the work as it is with East Side Coastal Resilience, which is certainly underway, as you all know, and actually closer to completion than to initiation. Part of the reason to create a Bureau of Coastal Resilience is that we accept, expect the city's portfolio of projects like that, only to grow. And we've had some very promising conversations with the Army Corps about new models of project delivery that they are empowered to explore, that might allow us to do even more of that in conjunction with the Army Corps. Specifically with respect to the HAT study, the Army Corps has not yet released its decision on the, you know, they had put out the recommended, the recommended alternative, which is primarily around landside barriers with a number of tidal barriers at specific water bodies like Jamaica Bay, Flushing Bay, Kilauea, and Kaul, et cetera. I believe they received something like 6,000 comments, far more than it had ever done for any project. And I think to their credit, the Army Corps has been very communicative with us and with the two states that are its partners. I don't have anything to say on where that process is heading right now. I believe the Army Corps may be here, they can speak for themselves, but I have to say, I think it's going well. The sad reality is, those are some of the most long-term projects you can imagine.
Right.
Right? That is the work of decades and not years, which is why, again, it becomes so important for us to think about the things we can do that complement that in the near term. But Elijah, maybe you could talk about the status of some of the specific projects we've got. got.
Sure. Just adding to-
Also greetings to your first, first appearance for the committee, and we all congratulate you on your new position and wish you well.
Thank you so much. It's an honor to be here, and as a native New Yorker and someone who's been in government for over a decade-
That's where the fun stops, by the way. Now you're, now you're like, gonna get it.
We, building off what we're saying with our collaboration with the Army Corps, they're in a process of understanding and responding to all of the feedback they receive from the city, but I wanted to focus that our feedback was about making sure that their approach covers multiple hazards and multiple climate risks, that they focus on environmental justice communities, that they prioritize community engagement and outreach as they move forward in their process, and that they expedite project delivery as much as possible so that we can see results from their process and work with them to deliver these projects as soon as we can. So there's a ton of collaboration happening with the Corps as well as with other city agencies on our coastal resilience portfolio of projects. There are some that we're more familiar with, like Eastside Coastal Resilience. There are others that are under construction, like the Battery Coastal Resilience Project, Brooklyn Bridge Montgomery Coastal Resilience Projects, which there are shovels in the ground. There are also ground breakings that happened recently at Battery Park City. And then there's other coastal resilience projects and plans happening in Coney Island and Red Hook and other neighborhoods with, where we're raising the shorelines and street ends to have more protection from those coastal storm surges. And then we also have the Climate Strong Communities process, which is the process by which we are developing the, a pipeline of projects, building off the neighborhoods that were impacted during Sandy, but really thinking about what's next. And I know that there were questions about, you know, the prioritization of the, of the projects that are there and what our selection criteria were for, for that work. And we are focused on the communities that are identified as environmental justice communities. We're focused on areas that are going to be receiving multiple hazards and multiple climate threats. And we're also looking at the areas where it's really going to be possible for a city-led adaptation project to make a difference within that neighborhood. So we're excited to work with you all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I have many more questions, but I'm going to be here all day. I'm very eager to hear from my esteemed co-chair and all the members of my committee and his committee who are here, so I'm going to cut off my questioning for now, recognize my great co-chair, and hear from other members who have a lot of value added. But I will just make a note to staff of my committee that I would like to make arrangements for a briefing with Elijah to find out everything that's really going on regarding storm surge. That's what kind of keeps me up at night. And so if that's a note to staff, if we can get that arranged, that would be great.
Okay? Certainly.
And with that, I recognize my esteemed co-chair.
Thank you so-
You got your own?
Thank you so much, Chair Janaro, and thank you for your questions, too. Before I get started with my questions, I did want to recognize that from, we've been joined by a special guest, someone I met with earlier, Mayor Nagish Coedala from Beertnagar, Nepal, who's here. We met earlier today in my office. Beertnagar, Mayor Coedala is the son of the Coedala family, which was instrumental in bringing democracy to Nepal. And one of the reasons why he's here for this hearing is because one of his priorities in Beertnagar, Nepal is to focus on building a wastewater treatment plant, because in Nepal, they're also addressing the serious issue of their streets flooding because of the monsoons. So thank you so much, Mayor Coedala, for joining us. It's an honor to have you here. And as the mayor and I have talked about, and as we all know, the climate crisis is an international crisis affecting all of our countries in different ways. And so I look forward to ways that we can collaborate both here in the city and globally, all of us as citizens, to address this issue of the climate crisis facing our world.
And I just want to make a note to my staff, the next time we have a hearing, we've got to bring somebody, too.
Is that the bar high on this one? We're international here. But, but thank you so much to our panel of commissioners, assistant commissioners, who are here today. It's, we appreciate your testimony very much and the work that you're doing in our city when it comes to resilience work. And we appreciate also that the testimony, Commissioner Agarwal, is so long because there are, you had a 5,000-word testimony set to go because of all the work that you all are doing, and that's the kind of thing we'd like to hear, given the magnitude of what we're facing. I just have a few questions myself before turning it over to colleagues. I did want to focus, Assistant Commissioner, on our parks and how our parks are a critical piece of our climate resiliency work as well. So just, you know, before focusing on other areas, I did mention in my opening statement the importance of our tree canopy as part of our, the fight against climate change, too. And so one question I had was, given the legislation we've passed, given the goal that I believe is critical of getting to a 30% tree canopy cover by 2035, how has Parks approached and thought about addressing and increasing tree plantings in our tree canopy, particularly in areas that desperately need it and lack it?
Thank you for the question. I definitely appreciate, and Parks greatly appreciates the support and emphasis on protecting the city's tree canopy, and it's obviously a major focus of our agency. With respect to some of the questions that we've received, both in advance of the, of the hearing and in the context of the, in the context of some of the bills that are proposed, just wanted to reiterate that our tree planting efforts continue to prioritize areas defined as highly heat vulnerable by the Department of Health's, you know, Heat Vulnerability Index, and the factors that go into the development of this index. So that continues to be the focus area. I'm not going to speak in detail to the, our tree planting priorities and the testimony that's probably been given to the, in the last hearing. That's not my area of expertise, and I'm glad to take back any specific questions to our colleagues, my counterparts in the forestry division in particular. But that, the rollout of our tree planting efforts, both in the right-of-way and in our natural areas, continues to be, you know, a main focus. As you may have heard, we've been very successful, not as successful as we wanted to be, but pretty successful in getting federal funding through the IRA for our tree planting efforts, in particular in natural areas. We received, you know, $10 million through the program of urban and community forestry just, just announced last month. And in addition, we received $5 million to focus on urban tree, urban tree care and stewardship and planting in, again, in some of our priority environmental justice areas. So that continues to be our focus, and we are looking at creative ways to bring more, more federal funding into that effort.
Absolutely. And I very much appreciated Parks's efforts in that regard, too, and the work that we've done together with Majority Leader Schumer as well to make sure that it's communities that particularly lack tree canopy coverage that are prioritized when it comes to IRA funding that our city has received. So thank you for Parks's leadership on that front. Going to the federal grant programs in particular, because I think, you know, one of the biggest things that we keep coming back to is we need more investments in, in our communities, in this area in particular, too. And so one thing I wanted to ask was, how will the city ensure that it gets its fair share of funding from the New York State Environmental Bond Act?
Thank you for the question, and highlighting the importance of the Bond Act, which we're very much aware of and have been eagerly awaiting information about for the last many years. We are taking, the way in which we're preparing for the opportunity to apply is to be meeting with our state, with our state DEP counterparts that can give us any insight into the focus of the, of the opportunities. In particular, in the last month, we submitted probably about 15 potential projects through their survey opportunity so that we could get feedback on what kinds of projects they might be receptive to funding. We also have focused very much on identifying some of the constraints that might hinder us from being successful in those applications, some of which might relate to the timeframe in which they would expect implementation. We've heard today about some of our challenges in procurement and our overall capital design schedules, and we want to be competitive with upstate in any capital programs, for example, that we would apply for. So it's very much on our mind, looking at what successful projects could be.
And if you all aren't able to receive that funding for whatever reason, or there's our other, you know, we don't get more through the IRA, for example, what are the contingency plans in place for the city to still access funds that would be needed for these resiliency programs?
Thank you for the question. That's focusing on funding, obviously very critical. We, in some ways, our mindset is always to be maybe scrappy and really pursue all the opportunities that we can. We're continuing through, to explore grant opportunities specifically through the mayor's, the deputy mayor's grants task force. That's been a way in which we are sharing information across, you know, city agencies about opportunities. We're continuing to pursue grants, grant opportunities from federal agencies like NOAA, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. We've done that for years and continue to do so, as well as pursue opportunities from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. They've funded many of our projects that have contributed to us understanding the conditions in particular of our wetlands over the last 10 years. We've, are continuing to look at other state programs that have always, for decades, really funded projects, both capital projects and stewardship and job training projects. So we can provide you, just to give you a more thorough understanding of what we've accomplished in the last 10 years, what that, those lists of grants are and what we have coming down the pike. But we are, continue to actively pursue that and have, at any given time, you know, more than a dozen projects that are grant-funded and more than a dozen that are, that we're pursuing on that scale.
Commissioner?
Just, just to clarify, were you focused on resilience projects in parks or more generic?
Parks in particular with my question, but also if you do have, you know, any comments on resiliency projects in general, too, very happy to hear about those.
Well, I'll just reiterate that, you know, when we don't get federal money either, we have to take money out of city, city tax levy for things like coastal resilience currently or for stormwater projects, we have to raise the water rate.
Got it. Thank you. Now, going back to parks a bit, you know, one of the things that I'm, and I said a few more questions, and I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues. One was, you know, on September 29th, when this, when the storm happened, and, you know, I, one thing that really struck me, both in walking my kids to school and seeing the extent of flooding that morning, and then over the course of the day, was I maintain that our parks and tree canopy have such an essential role to play in absorbing stormwater, in incorporating green infrastructure to assist with the issue of major flooding that we've seen. With this storm, with Ida before, you know, my district in particular, Queens Boulevard, places like that that were extraordinarily flooded, could really benefit from, from more creative infrastructure from parks and otherwise to, to address the flooding that we see in the rain. So I'm just curious, since this is our first time talking since that storm, how has Parks thought about, not so much its response, yes, but also proactively looking into the future, prospectively? What thoughts have you all had about how parks could play a role in addressing this issue and protecting us from the next climate emergency? What was your thinking before? How has it changed? What other measures do you all see as critical that could be implemented now when the next storm comes, which it will?
Thank you for the question. We are, in some ways, always looking at stormwater response throughout our parks system and both incorporating green and gray infrastructure. So I'll go back to just focusing on for a minute the kinds of formal green infrastructure, that collaboration that we've had with DEP, and then just mention some of our other approaches. So we've worked with DEP on expanding green infrastructure in, for stormwater capture since 2011, and we've, are continuing to sort of bolster that program, both through retrofits in our parks to capture both the impervious area within our parks property as well as impervious area on the street through a number of programs. Retrofitting parks, adding green infrastructure components into new park projects, and I'd, pursuing grants to expand more, our ability to do more creative green infrastructure projects. We've got, for example, a number of projects in Staten Island that wouldn't have otherwise come under other funding programs so that we can expand our own ability within our design and construction teams to implement projects that capture stormwater in our, from our own assets, as well as from the streets. So that continues to be a big focus. We've got dozens moving towards, you know, hundreds of projects that are in design and that will come online over the next several years. So with that rollout of programs, we are always increasing our capacity and ability to be creative, to speak to that component. And I think you'll see in the testimony that there are a number of project, types of programs that we're, of course, partnering on with DEP, whether it's cloud burst programs that happen in parks or blue belt programs, that in, in, to speak to some of our other elements of, you know, attention to having resilient parks, I mean, that's part of the reason we pay such close attention to the type of tree planting we do, how we do it, doing it right, whether both on the street or in the natural areas. And increasingly with, you know, over the last 10 years, an understanding of the climate change and the likelihood of having more resilient species coming from the south, we're actually looking very carefully at our plant palette. And so that's an ongoing effort. It's not, it's not, you know, something that we're suddenly thinking about, you know, since last week or even since Ida. And then, lastly, I'll just say that it's particularly important that we understand the critical aspect of maintenance, whether it's maintaining, you know, the vegetation, maintaining the rain gardens, ability to clean out catch basins after a storm. But it goes back to being able to do and have the resources to do the work on the ground to make sure these green infrastructure systems are ready for the next storm.
Thank you. And I just urge you all to really, to keep that planning going, because, you know, it's, there's far more we have to do on that front to think of our parks, you know, as fortifications against climate change. So I'm heartened to hear the efforts and encourage them to keep going. My final question is, you know, and really for both parks and DEP, is we're talking about all these issues that are so crucial, measures that need to be implemented, requiring funding from all different levels of government, and we couldn't agree more with that. At the same time, we're looking at an administration that's proposing drastic pegs that will cut from the very types of work and services, including these, that we need to fortify our cities. So my question for you all is, how will the recently announced hiring freeze, the PREG proposals phased in three times over the next year by the mayor disrupt the city's climate resiliency projects?
Well, so let me start by saying- Well, so let me start by saying, at least insofar as DEP is concerned, the water utility portion of DEP's budget, which is a little more than 90% of our budget and includes all of the stormwater and sewer work, is not subject to the PEG. We are subject to the OTPS freeze and we are subject to the hiring freeze, but we're not subject to the PEG. And of course, we are doing everything we possibly can to ensure that none of our services are hurt or slowed down by that, but we are working through the two freezes that we are subject to.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I just add that it's, there's a disconnect there between the work that you all need to be doing and are doing and getting the appropriate funding from our own city government to do so. If we expect the federal government and the states to step in, then our city needs to be the first mover to act and put that funding in, especially when it comes to resiliency projects. For parks, you know, I'd ask the same question of you as well, Assistant Commissioner, and with really a focus on for parks, you mentioned maintenance and how important that is, too. So how would these pegs, how are you all thinking about these pegs? How will they affect maintenance and operations, especially for parks that are smaller and don't have the private conservancy resources that depend on city funding?
Well, I'm actually not prepared to answer that, and I think as an agency, I don't think we're quite ready yet either. We'll be working with OMB and working with our budget office to identify how to best respond. So we're, we're committed to maintaining the parks at a, at a standard that we've always held and will continue to do so, but we won't have any specific response until the November plan comes out and at that time.
Sure. Thank you. And I would just add, again, we're in a conversation about cutting from parks and green spaces that are crucial for our health, crucial for our climate. The conversation should really be about how to increase resources for our parks department. And so to see pegs being proposed by this administration that will give you all fewer resources to maintain our green spaces, fewer resources to make our parks more resilient in the face of a worsening climate crisis, worsening floods, is shocking and doesn't comport with the work that we know needs to be done to actually invest in our park system. On that note, I'll turn it over now for questions from our colleagues. The first one is Councilmember Brooks Powers.
Thank you, Chairs, and thank you, Commissioner, for your remarks. As you know, in my district, last week, we saw flooding due to mesh that was left on top of catch basins on construction corridors, but that mesh was unfortunately not removed prior to the flooding at these locations. How is DEP addressing this issue in advance of future floodings? Also, how frequently does DEP clean catch basins? Can you walk through what the protocols are in place to ensure catch basins receive the necessary maintenance and cleaning? And finally, in 2018, the mayor made a commitment of $2 billion towards improving sewer infrastructure in Southeast Queens neighborhoods. Can you provide an update on the progress of that project? And is there any plans on expediting those, that particular project? Because we see these now frequent weather events happening where not only the places that have been queued up for, that have historically received flooding, we're seeing new parts of Queens that are receiving flooding as well. And I know that was last, but the last last is in the Arvern community along Beach 67th Street. DEP came in and thankfully put infrastructure in that was supposed to suck up the water from these weather events and to help prevent the flooding. Unfortunately, the way it was built, the pitch has created a dynamic where along Thursby Basin, excuse me, Thursby and Beach 67th, there has been a lot of flooding going into the homes. We saw that in Winter Storm Elliot in December. We saw that again last week with the rainwater. It doesn't even really take those weather events. If we have high tide, if there's light rain, we are still seeing it. So can DEP come back, revisit that site, and do the necessary work to address that project that took place and now is impacting over a dozen homes along that strip?
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll try to tackle these in reverse order. Regarding the specific project in Arvern, of course, we'll have somebody come take a look. I'm not going to commit we can fix it until we know what we think is going on, but we will certainly work with your office.
Well, the challenge is, some of those homes, even before, they didn't get the level of flooding they've gotten now. And the contractors that did it had acknowledged to some of the homeowners that it was not, when they looked back after the fact, that it's not pitched correctly.
Huh, okay. Well, we will, as I said, we'll, we'll, we'll look into that particular site. In terms of Southeast Queens, the work is proceeding. I think, as I was saying in my statement, we are thinking broadly about how we can expand and accelerate stormwater management work across the city. So we don't have any specific plans right now to accelerate the work specifically going in, on in Southeast Queens, but that is in the budget. It is in the budget for all of the next 10 years, so that work is slated to continue on.
I'm sorry, to that point, what will the city be doing in the meantime? Because we have homeowners that are being flooded, we have people who live in the basement in those areas, we have high water tables. Literally, one of my home, one of my residents in my district woke up by standing up off her bed to get ready for work, only to find that her feet was covered with water. So as they wait for this construction project to take place, what is the city doing to make sure that we are mitigating the flooding that's taking place?
Well, Councilmember, look, as I, as I said, the reality is, these are long-term projects, right? There is no matter, no, no, no amount of desire on our part could accelerate all of those projects at once. It's one of the reasons that we started last year, only a couple of months after this administration took office, rainfall-ready, which is really, as I have characterized it, it's the Band-Aid. You know, a Band-Aid is what you put on a wound while nature slowly heals the wound, but you protect it from getting worse, right? And so what that includes, for example, is the distribution of flood barriers, which are not a unique technology. You can buy them at Home Depot. We give them out, you know, in part to help people, in part to make sure people know that, that that technology exists. So people who have particular flooding issues through their driveway, through a front door, you basically, it's, it's like a sandbag that's easier to store because you can empty the water out and refill it in advance of the flood.
And we thank you for, you did give that to my district as well, some pumps, and we are appreciative of that.
The some pumps that we've started distributing in certain circumstances, we have flood alarms, so just like you have a smoke alarm, we would encourage anybody who lives in a basement apartment, you can get a flood sensor so that your constituent would have, wouldn't have woken up with the surprise. She would have heard the alarm to let her know when flooding is starting. Pursuant to a local law, my agency is working now on a study around backwater preventers. So that is, I will have more to say in a couple of months on that score, certainly before the end of the year. So there are a number of things. And finally, of course, it's about getting flood insurance, which I know is a financial challenge to some, but nonetheless, it is just a reality that the city is not going to be able to protect everybody in the near term. We are working as hard as we can to develop a comprehensive approach, but it will take time. There is no, no way around it. You asked about catch basin?
One point on that, there are some homeowners or residents that have flood insurance and were told by their insurance carrier that they would not be covering it.
Hmm, well, that, I, that is something that I think perhaps we should have a follow-on conversation about. We have heard of complaints like that, and of course, it is the state that deals with enforcing good behavior among insurance companies, but I think that's something I'd be happy to talk with you and your staff about.
Thank you.
You asked about catch basin cleaning. So at the beginning of last fiscal year, so last summer, DEP implemented something I think is, is really very good, which is a, a risk-based approach to catch basin inspections and cleanings. So rather than treating all 160,000 of our catch basins as equally likely to get clogged or equally impactful if they do get clogged, we actually developed a risk assessment. So some catch basins that are on high-traffic streets or near a subway station or something, so we think they might be likely to get clogged very quickly, or they would be really impactful if they flood, they are actually getting checked every six months. Others that are for location reasons or others less likely to get clogged or less impactful if they do are on a three-year cycle. That's a way that we optimize the impact of the labor hours that it takes physically to go around and check these. In advance of a storm, so whenever the flash flood program is activated, there are about 2,000 high-priority catch basins that are allocated among DEP, DOT, and sanitation. And so when the flash flood, flash flood program is activated by the Office of Emergency Management, as it was on Thursday morning, the 28th, actually, pretty early, I think 8:00 a.m., crews go out and check those high-priority locations, and to the extent that it's possible, we will go and clean them if they are clogged. One of the things that I think we, we are always eager to remind people of is there is a difference between clogging and covering, right? So if a catch basin fills up with material, the top has to be opened up, it has to get scooped out, that requires a special truck, only DEP can do that. What often happens, especially in the middle of a storm, and I know of several places in the city where this happened on the 29th, that when the rains started, sanitation suites, streets sweepers had done their job, the catch basins were, were fine. All of that water, especially during, during the autumn, brings leaves, covers over, mats over the catch basins, and then you start getting flooding. Of course, when we find out about that, we do dispatch crews in the middle of a storm, as long as it's safe and immediately right after, to clear those spaces. But I also know of several instances, and maybe even one or two people here, who went out in the middle of the storm, identified locations like that, all it takes is a rake. And I think one opportunity we may have is to think about how we get New Yorkers to do that kind of work, that the reality is, there is no way with massive increases in resources that DEP could respond in real time to 160,000 catch basins around the city. So I think there is something around a distributed response. And then you mentioned the meshes, which, you know, you and I spoke about the weekend of the 30th, 31st. You know, those construction meshes, and these are, this is actually a kind of a lining that basically prevents grit from going into the catch basins. It's particularly, I believe, required in, in the separately sewered areas of the city, including your district. And it is actually a state DEC requirement for construction. So our plan is actually, we need to talk to DEC, because one of the things that we think is probably necessary is a requirement on their part, that the construction contracts include a commitment by the contractor, when there is a flash flood warning, to remove those meshes. It is not something that DEP installs, it's not even something that DEP mandates, it is actually a state item. So we will talk to them.
Thank you for that, and thank you, Chairs.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. We're joined by Councilmember Narcisse, happy to have her here with us. And I recognize Councilmember Nurse for questions. And we didn't start the clock right away over the last, so, yeah, it was, there was, there was extra time there, but, you know, it's a majority whip.
Thank you, Chair.
Come on. And we recognize, we recognize Councilmember Nurse for questions.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, congratulations and welcome. I want to thank you, Commissioner, for just the proactive communications you've had, at least directly with me, with regards to heavy rain events in Bushwick, and just, just how, how available and accessible you have been to hear all of my gripes. And I do appreciate the short-term mitigation efforts that you all have been putting in in the recurring areas that are getting hit in Bushwick. However, we're kind, you know, and I've said this at other hearings, we're just at this point where people are demanding answers. I'm aware of what you're saying, because I'm here at these hearings. But I think, at this point, what we're looking for is an, is a timeline of when there will even be a proposal for what to do. And I don't know, it's hard to understand, I understand that each one is, each neighborhood that has this type of recurring flooding might have specific things that are unique to it, but Bushwick needs to know where we are in that pipeline. Are we neighborhood 20? Are we neighborhood 3? Is it in two years, we will get a vision of a proposal? Just anything more concretely would be really helpful, because we are the ones getting yelled at, we are the ones getting the, the brunt of the communications with which, and the answers are not easy to communicate. And so we need just a little more transparency in terms of where we are in these projects.
Excuse me. Councilmember, Councilmember, look, it's a, it's a very fair question, certainly for your specific issue with the flooding on Knickerbocker that we've, that you and I have walked through, and we've spent a lot of time. There is active work going on right now around what the alternatives could be. So I think we would have more to share with your constituents, certainly before the end of the year. I don't know if that includes a firm timetable, right? But we will certainly have more to say that...
Will it include what the, all the options are?
Certainly, it will include the options that we are exploring.
Okay. Is there any funding dedicated to, specifically to addressing the flooding in Bushwick?
I think, once we figure out exactly what the preferred option is, there is, so, so it was alluded to, I forget, in, in, I think, one of the chair's opening remarks, $2 billion that was set aside in the New Normal Report. That is a pool of money that we could potentially draw from. We will have to figure out where to pull that funding together from, but, you know, realistically, first, we have to figure out what we're, what we're trying to do. For what it's worth, I'll say, in part because of the, in part because of our, our ability to have recourse to the water bill, and in part because DEP has focused so much on our ability to do procurement and deliver capital. Capital availability is not our main constraint. Our main constraint is much more around the ability to design these projects at once. I think you're all at the city council familiar with the challenges that New York City has had in attracting and retaining civil engineers.
Yes.
Which is not just about the city, I hear that from every AE consultant out there, right? But that's one of our key bottlenecks.
Thank you for that. I do think that, you know, I would really recommend that the city, you know, engage in louder outreach on communicating that the timelines are far, because, you know, the water barriers are nice, if you have a hose, but I'm not seeing them being used actively. We've given it a lot away, we appreciate them, and it feels like something, but it, when, when it actually is happening in real time, it's, it's not as effective. So I, I think we need to have more robust communications from the agencies or the administration, like, hey, we don't have answers for you for two to three years. And because people need to know that when they're investing in our communities, because it's not just, for us, it's not just Knickerbocker, we have public housing, we have, you know, like a 20, you know, 10, 15-block radius where people are just, whole floors just useless. Okay, I'll move on. Another question I have is kind of in relation to the resolution, and I've asked about this a little bit before. Does DEP formally review land use or housing applications involving city subsidies that will be constructed within future high-risk flood zones?
I will need to see whether DEP has any role within that process. I believe that would be undertaken by city planning, but I would have to get back to you on that.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Nurse. Next up is Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Chairs De Niro and Krishnan for this crucial hearing, Commissioner, and it's good to see you and your colleagues all here. I just want to start by thanking DEP for its transformational investments, whether it's the... it's the storm-separate sewer infrastructure, replacing septic and combined sewer over the last 30 years, and of course, landmark Blue Belt investments that have been just transformational for my communities, even with current challenges. I just have three questions that I want to focus in on. The first is with respect to the Seawall project. First forecasts were that it was going to start in 2018 and finish in 2021, and obviously that has been a mistake. And I know they're about to take over some Blue Belt creations from DEP near Father Capodanno, so I'd love to hear your perspective on where things are and what needs to happen for this to move forward. Additionally, I know that there is some Blue Belt project expansions contemplated for South Beach and Grasmere, but not yet in the capital plan. I know you talked about that in the round, but love to hear more specifics about, you know, when that might come about. And then finally, with respect to the westerly Willowbrook-Clove Lakes drainage study that's concluding this month, and the options that are going to be presented from that, I'd love to know a timeline of when we could start to see, a timeline for something, in particular for Horizon Village, which has been devastated twice in the last 20 years by storms. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Councilmember. I apologize, I will have to get back to you on both Clove Lake and South Beach, I just don't have those timelines at my fingertips. I know, as you say, the Clove Lake study is winding down, but I have not been briefed on what it's going to say yet, so I don't have any sneak peek to offer, I'm sorry. But happy to give you one in private.
Sure.
On the South Shore Seawall, that is something that has occupied a fair bit of my attention personally. I've spoken to Congresswoman Molly Atakas about it personally, the DEC Commissioner, Basil Segos, and I have convened a number of meetings with the Army Corps, with parks, with national parks, there are a number of agencies involved, which is part of the problem, right? And I say that as an agency, so we are sometimes part of the problem as well, but the more agencies you have, especially the more levels of government, the more things drag on. The good news is, the first phase really is on the verge of issuing a contract. Again, I believe we've got somebody from the Army Corps here, so I won't make news for them, you could ask them, but I will simply assure you that getting that project underway has occupied a lot of my attention, a lot of Commissioner Segos's attention. I know Colonel Young at the, both Colonel Young and Colonel Lloyd have been personally involved at the Army Corps, so we are on it. What I will also say, and I think I have learned a great deal from the problems that project has faced, as we should apply to the HAT study, right? We need to think about the HATS as being the South Shore of Staten Island project times 30, right? And so we have had issues with hazardous waste, right? As you know, there's a site there that's got radioactive waste that New York City has not actually got a track record of doing cleanups for. So we are in a very thorny discussion with the federal and state governments about how to allocate responsibility for that. We've had a very big issue that has caused significant delays, and again, I think this is a situation in which everybody's been working hard, and everybody's been working in good faith, but because the inland work is what's called a betterment, the city is going to pay for it, but also the city has to design it, we have actually spent more than two years going back and forth, with us sending them drawings and them sending them back. And again, I don't mean to say this as an attack or criticism on the Corps, I think they are working in good faith, but everybody does things slightly differently. So my agency has a really good track record of doing very big construction projects. We don't do our designs in exactly the same way as the Army Corps does. And so one of the things that was in, as Elijah alluded to, our recommendations and our input into the Army Corps' HAT study, and something frankly I've begun to talk to our congressional delegation about with respect to the upcoming Water Resources and Defense Authorization Act, which is, happens every two years in Congress, WERA, is actually about expanding the mission of HATS, so that not because we need the feds to pay more, I think New York City should pay its fair share, but because that division of design work is a killer. And if we think about HATS, which is going to have not only multi-climate hazards with inland flooding that it has to address, sunny day flooding that it's going to have to address from sea level rise, but also things like recreation, parks access, access to ferries, things like that, the HATS project, like, is going to be some of the most complex waterfront work imaginable, and if we wind up in a situation in which there are multiple agencies trying to design it together, that is a recipe for delay that will add multiple decades to what is already a multiple-decades program.
Thank you. Let's catch up offline about that, that's very important. Thank you, Chairs.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Carr. I recognize Councilman Wrestler for questions.
Thank you very much, Chair Gennaro, it's good to have you back, and thank you to you and Chair Krishnan for your leadership on this hearing, it could not be more pressing and important. And thank you to the administration officials for joining us today. I'd like to just begin by building off of Chair Krishnan's final comments about how we can anticipate these pegs to impact resiliency efforts across the city. Commissioner, do you think you can realistically achieve the kind of ambitions that you've set out with 15% pegs kind of over your head? And if the other panelists would like to comment on how devastating these draconian cuts would be on your ability to effectively do your work, we would welcome any insights that you have to offer.
Well, Councilmember, I'll just start by reiterating, because our, because DEP's funding, and so the funding for stormwater is water utility, and we could save a ton of money, and it still can't be used for other city purposes, of course, DEP has not been subject to the peg, so stormwater resilience is not affected by the peg. We are subject to the hiring freeze, and we are working with OMB in the hopes of getting exemptions from those, from the hiring freeze. And there is this process around OTPS spending that has been frozen.
It's been frozen.
And so we're trying to figure out how to unfreeze key categories there.
Anything else you'd like to add about how you can navigate these extraordinary cuts?
Similar to what Parks also said, we're in the process with OMB in figuring this all out, so...
Okay. You know, I just want to be clear, climate change remains the single greatest threat to the people of New York City, we have to be deepening these investments, the prospect that across-the-board deep cuts could impact our ability to make these necessary resiliency investments, and frankly, much, much more, is indefensible. And I greatly hope that the mayor and the OMB director will recognize that this is an area that must be spared from any potential cuts. Just building on Councilmember Nurse's line of questioning, similarly, I think we're looking for clarity on when we're going to see more comprehensive planning that can realistically provide protection for our communities. And my recollection is that Plan NYC requires, we're now calling it Plan NYC again? Is that the, so, not Plan YC, Plan NYC?
Oh, I prefer Plan YC, if you don't mind, but I also have a silent A at the end of my names.
I know the old OLTPS days, it was Plan YC, I just was unsure where we were. So under Plan YC, we'll go with that, DP's required to release a stormwater flooding adaption, adaptation plan by 2024. And want to understand, will this plan include target improvements for specific areas that the city knows well flood and flood consistently? What I certainly experience in Council District 33, which is waterfront district, is that it's the areas that flood when it rains a little, that are absolutely decimated when it rains a lot. And yet, we don't see improvements. We, with all due respect, Commissioner, I adore your staff, I spend time and time again on the phone with them, looking at sites, they say they're going to make improvements, they're never adequate. And we continue to have enormous challenges, and I don't know if it's the reticence to take on big, lengthy capital projects that are obviously very costly, but we're not seeing the interventions that are needed in the places on Dean Street and Borum Hill, on Throop and Wallabout and South Williamsburg, on Newell and Messerall and Greenport, I mean, these are the sites that everybody knows always flood, Fourth Avenue along Carroll, where Shahan and I border, they flood constantly, and yet, I don't see anything getting better. How do we shift? How do we do better? Is that going to be laid out in this plan next year? How do I be a better advocate for my neighborhoods to actually see the investments that we need?
Well, look, Councilmember, I, we have been, certainly for the last year and a half, or nearly two years now, we have been trying to shift gears at DEP to really focus on resilience as the driving force of a lot of our capital thinking. For example, we released the rainfall ready maps last summer. That was new, right? That was the result of a lot of work, some of it done at MOC EJ under the previous administration, but that was new. We are now in the process, among other things, of using those hotspots where we know there is flooding to guide our capital prioritization, right? That is not actually the way it had been done for generations at DEP. So, you know, much like bringing kind of data-driven rationality to how we do catch basin inspections, we're beginning the process of bringing that kind of risk or impact prioritization to how we think about capital investments to address flooding. Among the big things that is just about ready, or we're beginning to use it now, but has been a major investment over the last year or two, is building what we call an all-pipes model. So we now have, I won't call it a digital twin, it's not quite that fancy, but really for the first time, we now have a model of how all of the sewers interconnect. That's really important, because what we know, first of all, it's all interconnected. And so among the things that we are now just at the, at the early stages of being able to do, is understand, well, if there's flooding down here, the fastest, most cost-effective way to address it might not be there. It might be upstream, because all the water up here is flowing down here. It may also be that if there's flooding up here, the real problem is a bottleneck down here. We now have the ability to really understand that. And one of the things that I think we are coming to terms with as an agency is the fact that until the weather started changing a couple of years ago, we didn't need to worry about this that much, we just didn't have to understand it, right? And now we do. And so we are building the infrastructure so that we can do that kind of rational planning. Yes, we are working towards a comprehensive strategy, I do not, I am not yet able to tell you how detailed or specific that will be. What I can tell you is that we are working on it with a large team, with a lot of interbureau and in fact, interagency work going on. It is something that is one of my top priorities, it is not coincidental that the mayor asked me to be Chief Climate Officer and Commissioner at DEP at the same time, it's precisely to make sure that we are fully integrating DEP into this. And of course, we will be bringing, we will be standing up this Bureau of Coastal Resilience, in part because one of the things we've realized, and not realized, but one of the things we are acting on, is the reality that the first place that tidal flows go is down the drain. And one of the things which we certainly saw on the 29th, one of the issues that caused even more flooding than that massive rainstorm, the second most intense rainstorm in the city's recorded history brought us, was the fact that the hour of most intense rain from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM unfortunately took place at high tide. And so we had a number of parts of the city where our outflows, which otherwise would have drained water out of the city into the harbor, actually were backed up because the tide had risen so high that they were covered over. So among the things we have to work on is, and I'm sorry, Chair, but I want to give a complete answer, I swear to give a complete answer.
He's giving me a hard time. I thought that Chair Krishnan promised me double the time today, I must have misunderstood.
But, but among the things that we are, we are working on is how to accelerate the tide gates, so that we can prevent flooding from occurring because water is backing up, which is something, for example, that happens regularly unfortunately in the Rockaways.
Look, and it's, this is interconnected to some of the proposals that were included in the HAT study, it's, I will just say, I thought, I appreciated the Army Corps engaging with us as communities across the city in a quite open and thoughtful way. I could never understand what the city's position was throughout this process. And so I struggled to understand what the city was advocating for. My community was organized, we were pushing, we were very concerned about 15-foot walls that would, you know, create a bathtub effect and cut our communities off from our waterfronts. But I'd really like to better understand, and maybe with new leadership, we can have those conversations in the mayor's office, to have clarity on what you're all advocating for. And I'll just say in closing, because I've gone over time, in part because you gave such a thoughtful and lengthy response, I appreciate a data-driven approach to identifying where we need to make the capital improvements to improve our sewer infrastructure. I don't have the data, but I know the lived experience of my neighbors, and I can tell you the places in my community that are hit time and again and again. And we will provide that list once again to DEP, and be the squeakiest wheel that I know how to be, but we desperately want to see attention and intervention in these sites that are problematic sites. So look for an email from me very shortly, but, you know, hope we can work together to make some improvements in our waterfront district. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Councilmember Wrestler. A lot of leeway there. Councilmember Holden?
Thank you, Chairs, and I want a Lincoln Wrestler time also.
Man, once he starts, slippery slope.
I'm on both committees, so we should do, we should get extra time. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Chairs, and thank you, Commissioner. Two questions regarding stormwater runoff. One problem, I have a lot of utility work in my district, many blocks, and I brought this up to DEP many times, especially National Grid, they're putting, replacing gas lines on the sidewalk. When they restore the sidewalk, they pave the whole thing, including the strip that's not the property owner's space, that's the city's space. Used to be a grass strip, now we have concrete, which is counterproductive if we're doing, you know, the bio swales or the rain gardens, and then we're paving over blocks and blocks in districts around Queens and throughout the city. That's one. Where I do have pending legislation that would actually define that space, that you can't pave over it. It hasn't been drafted yet, I'm waiting several weeks or months, and, but I think that could be part of your plan to mitigate some of the, because obviously, the stormwater runoff that we're experiencing, we're experiencing now, in my district, it goes into the Newtown Creek. And we know what that's like, the Newtown Creek is another story. But the second thing, the Yards Text Amendment of 2008 that this council passed, it's really not being enforced properly by DOB. I see every, every construction project in my district, I, almost every one of them, I have to address, meaning somebody's not paying attention at DOB if they're permitting this, you know, they're allowing it. I send inspectors down there from DOB, and most of the time, they come back, they didn't find anything wrong. And I know this, so I have to send another inspector, and depending on which DOB inspector I, they send, I get lucky sometimes. Most of the time, I'm spinning my wheels. That means, and this is, by the way, there's been articles about this for, since 2008, about how the DOB is not really enforcing it. So we need to pull all this together. My question would be, number one, on the, on the Yards Text Amendment, can DEP actually help out and kind of guide DOB? Because I don't know, again, if they're really educating their inspectors properly. And I'll speak to the Commissioner of DOB also, but question one would be, would you get involved in that and helping? Because that, I'm telling you, almost every project that I'm seeing in my district that they're paving over, because they want to park more cars, and it is, and they're putting in everywhere, they're putting in their cars in front of their stoops, in their doorways, which I'm trying to get, you know, DOB to enforce that, that's almost impossible. And I'm actually reaching out to the fire department, because that seems to be, you're blocking egress, you know? So all these questions, we need help from your, or somebody's help on this.
Thank you, Councilmember. Look, I will, so the, the issue of the text amendment enforcement is something that I certainly know is a challenge. I think it is worth having a conversation that I would be happy to engage with Commissioner Otto about, in terms of how we think perhaps differently about enforcement. in terms of how we think perhaps differently about enforcement. I don't know whether that would require a legislative change or an inter-agency agreement. We would need to think about how we resource something like that because we, you know, I think one of the things frankly that tends to happen is that we assign tasks based on who has resources or who has expertise as opposed to which agency is really focused on ensuring that a bad thing doesn't happen. And there may need to be some realignment there.
But just on dealing with inspectors that don't know the law, that's one thing. It's another thing, because I'm always talking to homeowners and they're complaining they're getting flooded. Their sewers are backing up. And I said, "Well, look at your neighbors." I said, "Part of the problem is, if you look at even your property, you've paved over 90% or 100% of your yard." And that's causing it. "Well, no," I said, "it's overdevelopment, but it's, we're concreting everything. We're cementing grass." But when the city actually does it, when the city participates in that, like I mentioned about the grass strip, it may not seem like a lot, but when you look at entire blocks of my district, and I photographed this, and I did give it to DEP, I said, "Let's do something about this. Let's stop doing this. Let's put more grass." And again, if it takes legislation, I'll do it. However, it shouldn't really. Because it's not really the property owner's space. There, most of the properties, it ends at the sidewalk, and then you have that strip. It could be four feet. It could be more in certain areas. So, if we can coordinate that and kind of quickly, because that's, they're replacing, you know, miles and miles every day, and it's National Grid and Con Ed that are doing it. And each time I talk to them, they say, "You know, we don't know anything about that. We'll pave," and they're paving it. And it's not their property. It's not, it's the city's property. But we can control that. Thanks.
And I just want to jump in for a second. I just want to give Bob a little latitude because this is an important question, and I think we all see it. And so, I'm going to give him a little latitude here. And he also sits next to me at the council, so, you know.
Yeah, I can harass you sometimes on that. But no, this is important.
So, Rick, take as long as you want to give an answer to that.
Well, look, on this one, I would, I will confess, it's not something that I have an answer to off the top of my head, but I'm happy to work with you. It's something that I've heard in the past. How we enforce construction rules across the city, frankly, we mention it in Plan YC as something that we've got to have happen. It's something that is part of the City of Yes for Carbon Nutrality. That's, I believe, coming before the city council very soon. But on the specific issue of what Con Ed and National Grid might be doing on the sidewalks, I will follow up with you.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you, Councilmember Holden. I recognize Councilmember Velazquez.
Hi, and thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for your work. So, listening to my colleagues and their questioning, I can't help but ask you, a lot of these would be facilitated better with borough commissioners. And so, why hasn't DEP hired any borough commissioners yet?
Well, then, thank you, council member. We, so the position of borough commissioners was actually legislated by the city council, I believe, two years ago. So, we have been in the process of getting ready and hiring and recruiting. And with the hiring freeze, we're a little bit stuck right now. But I'm hoping to work through that. Because I agree with you, among the themes that we've heard here is better communication, and that is something that, you know, I have my deputy commissioner for Public Affairs and Communications who's been doing a great job, but is trying to build her team. And we could use those extra resources.
Do we expect that to be done within this calendar year, or?
Again, there's the hiring freeze right now, and OMB is working through the exception requests. And I don't have any, I don't have a timeline I can give you right now.
Perfect. Thank you for that. You had mentioned earlier, the DEP risk assessment. Is there a way that we, as council members, can get what that looks like in our district? I know certain parts of my district, every single time that there is flooding, and you've seen it, not just the flooding, but also the sinkholes that happen afterwards, specifically in my district because of the construction in the 20s. Is there a way to get that information to us?
Well, one of the things that I, you know, again, with a more structured approach to outreach that I would love to be able to do is ensure that, and Councilmember Wrestler's question kind of incorporated this, ensure that our rainfall-ready map that we're really relying on incorporates all of the kind of lived experience out there. You know, I've been very pleased when I go out, you know, as I did with you and your district and with others and across the city, and we talk to constituents who have experienced flooding. Our map is usually accurate, but it's not 100% necessarily. And before we make decisions on it, we'd like to incorporate all of that. I would like to do that in a systematic way. We haven't started that yet. And I think frankly, it's kind of just how we sequence the work. I really cannot stress enough how daunting the challenge of the city's stormwater management is. It is a breathtakingly complex system. And so, right now, we've prioritized looking at a number of, known a very finite number, I will point out, number of locations that we think typify the kind of problems that we see much more broadly around the city to identify how some of the solutions might work, so that we can figure out by extrapolation, what would a citywide response actually involve? That's really step one, which is in part why I, you know, frankly, had to hedge a little bit with Councilmember Wrestler's question. Because I don't know how precise next year's plan is going to be, but it is certainly going to be a step in the right direction.
I appreciate that because I have so many local groups who are willing and able to come and help with the cleaning, at least of the catch basins on the surface area. And so, if we can just find those areas that we need to target, especially on days that we know are going to be significant with significant rainfall, then we want to be ready as well. And if we can just target those areas as a community, we can actually spare a lot of the work that you guys would have to do as well. So that way, like, we got to work together, and this is a pathway to that. You had mentioned flood alarms as a recommendation to Councilmember Brooks Powers. Is there an opportunity there to launch a citywide program to cover for families that have a significant low-income bracket to where we're actually, like, saving their lives? Do you see a benefit for this?
Well, so the good news is, these are not very expensive devices, right? I don't have a number off the top of my head, but we're not talking about a $50 or $100 item. And DEP has some that we are very happy to give away. We haven't done that in a systematic citywide way, but it is something worth exploring.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thanks so much, council member. And now, we have Councilmember Narcisse.
Thank you, Chairs. Good afternoon, everyone. And by the way, you're one of the important agency in my life because I represent the 46th district. It's been a problem for us, even worse ever since Sandy. Every little rain, all the calls that I'm getting, and usually I have to be on the street riding the storm to go around and visit folks in my district, which is Garrison Beach, Bergen Beach, Canarsie, Mill Basin area. So you know where I'm talking about, right? So, in my district, it's every day that when I see rain, I have to cross my little finger. So, what can we do? What's in plan to ease our pain in this district? Because we're talking about sewage backup. I witness feces coming to people's home. So, I'm wondering where we at. And before we get to that answer, we have infrastructure money out there from the federal level. How many proposals that you have forth in front of the federal to make sure that we get our fair share in the city of New York?
I will ask Elijah to give you some of the numbers around federal, but let me take a couple of, as I said earlier, one of our challenges with federal money is, and frankly, I've had this conversation with a number of members of our congressional delegation, is that they believe that, well, if New York City is going to get X, or New York State's going to get X amount of money, New York City is about half the state, so we're going to get about half that, which is not at all true. So, on the money, there are three flavors of money coming from the federal government. One is delivered through block grants, right? And that's a formula that goes out to cities, the CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Money. That we've been, you know, that we get by formula. What we do, there's a coordinated inter-agency effort that prioritizes how that CDBG resilience money is going to be invested. And we have been very successful in quickly getting federal approval to spend that money. It's coordinated through the deputy mayor of operations team. Examples of the work that we do, a lot of it has actually gone to NICA to help fund a lot of the resilience work and flood protection work at NICA facilities. So, that's been very successful. I'll see if we can get back to you either right now or later with a number on how many proposals we have out to the federal government. But where the federal government has a competitive program that they are administering, we do very well generally. Right? We have, we have large numbers. Because we can make an investment that impacts a lot of people, we generally look good on a cost-benefit basis, even though our construction costs are higher. So, when the federal government administers a program, we do well. Where we lose is when the state administers a program, because as I said earlier, they often put restrictions on either what we can apply for. So there is a huge amount of water infrastructure money from the federal government that the state has determined New York City should not have access to at all. So, they are, by agency discretion, they have denied us access to what we think we could get, about a billion dollars in federal money for investments in our water infrastructure, which I think is unfair. We have tried to make that point to them, but they have not seen fit to change anything. So, I will say, we are working as hard as we can to maximize federal money. And I think where, where, where the deck is not stacked against us, we're doing pretty well. You asked about sewer backups and...
And because I want to know, are there any plans to upgrade those infrastructure in those areas that I'm talking about? Because we are suffering there.
Well, as I said earlier, we are a year into what will be a multi-year project to figure out how to make our stormwater management infrastructure resilient to the kind of weather that we now have. It started with having the data that allows us to know where these things are happening. As I mentioned earlier, we've built a model, so we really now can understand how the sewer system works, so we can target interventions. We are working right now on a number of known locations that are chronic problems because those are archetypes for what we might have to do across the city. And we are, for example, looking at how we expand our cloud burst infrastructure, how we think about a citywide approach to blue belts. All of that is going on. Unfortunately, we're only a year and a half into it. And as a result, we're kind of at the point where there's a lot of engineering work. We don't have that much we can share yet. So, I don't have a clear answer. One thing I will point out, because you mentioned sewer backups. We actually are, DEP has done a pretty good job over the last decade of reducing sewer backups. We have fewer than half as many sewer backups as we did a decade ago. It's still too many. One thing that we have become aware of is that actually more than half of the sewer backups that are reported are not due to what's going on in the sewer. So, when a sewer backup is reported, we send a truck out, which costs a significant amount of time and money.
You've been pretty good, by the way. I love DEB. You've been responding, but this area, particular 46, we're now talking about Canarsie, Bergen Beach. Canarsie getting a little better, but you have Bergen Beach, you have Mill Basin area. That is awful.
I understand. And but one of the things that I think we're going to have to start educating homeowners about is, I think we have increasing evidence that there are homeowners who are unknowingly causing their own sewer backups. Because what we see is a lot of situations in which the rain gutter that takes rain off of the roof is going straight into the sewer line. And in a major rainstorm like we had on the 29th, that kind of pressure behind the sewer connection to the street is actually liable to cause the water to back up into the home. And I think this is what we are seeing with the half of all sewer backup complaints, where we send a truck, there is no evidence that the sewer was ever backed up. So, there should not have been a sewer backup from the main sewer, but it was probably behind the connection because you've got a rain gutter connection. And in parts of your neighborhood, in parts of your district, we have a separate storm sewer and sanitary sewer. In those parts of the city, it is actually illegal to have a connection from your roof into the sanitary sewer. There should be no stormwater into a sanitary sewer. So, it is something that I would like to work towards an educational effort on. The good news is disconnecting a rain gutter from the sewer pipe, which again, is necessary to do by law in an MS4 area, is still a really good and neighborly thing to do in a CSO area. Happily, it's very cheap, and it's the kind of thing, many of you have done rain barrel giveaways. The right answer for something like that is cut off the gutter, so it doesn't go into the sewer anymore, put a rain barrel underneath it, and then you've got the benefit of storing rain for your garden and having it disperse very gently as the rain barrel is designed to do.
And Chair, I know I'm pushing it, but I heard about 160,000 catch basin throughout the city. And you have about 2,000 that's kind of like a high priority area. So, do you have a list of where the high priority areas are? And in the catch basin part, I want to find out what are the, I mean, where strategically you have catch basin in my area? And because I have seen water flooding, or because every, if you want to check it out on my Facebook, I have to take my district up and down because people are calling me left and right. I cannot sleep when it is heavy rain. So, when it's a storm, forget it. So, I need your help, Commissioner. I don't want to squeeze because I run out of my time, but I need your help in my district.
I'd be happy to share, we'll get back to you with the list of those priority catch basins that get checked during a flash flood advisory that are in your district. Happy to share that data.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I did want to add on the federal funding, the city since January of 2022 has applied for over $2 billion of infrastructure funds from the federal government, and that includes several different agencies like EPA, NOAA, FEMA, through the BRIC program, through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And so, there is a pipeline of applications that we've submitted. We've had through BRIC funding awarded. We've had through other programs, hundreds of millions of dollars awarded. And I know that within Canarsie, we have the Climate Storm Communities work, in which we're specifically targeting that work so that we can scope it with community members and identify what those potential projects would be, and really asking residents what they think, what might be successful projects. But having that engagement process specifically tailored to federal grant programs and state funding sources so that we can end with an application to get more resources.
I appreciate you, and I'm hoping so we can do some seminars together. Something got to be done because those people actually are in needs. Because like I said, last week again, I had to go all over Garrison Beach and seeing people's houses under the flood. That's unfair. And having the backups from the sewage system, that's not healthy. As a nurse, I'm going to tell you, not healthy at all. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Narcisse. And then, you're most welcome. And then, it's just, I have two quick questions, and my esteemed co-chair has a question or two. Let me just get to that, and then you can have lunch, you know. Are you drinking enough? Just like, have you taken a sip out of that thing recently? Just like, okay, good. You worry me a little bit. Let's start with Rick. Now, in your testimony, you talked about, you know, the help that would be most welcome from the council regarding the speed of projects. And if you could just kind of expand like that, on that, like, what is it that we could do in that regard? I mean, it's not very compelling, but just want to know what it is.
Well, I mean, I will say, I don't have a, I don't have... Well, I, I mean, I will say, I don't have a, I don't have a legislative proposal to, to offer. I just, I would ask you all to think about, I guess, the way I see it, our challenge is not, not wanting to do the right thing. It is not even a lack of capital, because once we have the projects identified, I have a $31 billion 10-year capital plan at DEP. Capital's not really the main constraint if we choose to prioritize it. But as I, as I mentioned, many of these projects, like the fastest possible timeline is six years, seven years, right? And I think if there is a place for us collectively to figure out how to make government work better, how to rise to the challenge of resilience, it's asking ourselves, how do we speed that, that up? You know, for example, one of the brilliant things about-
So, so, so what you're getting at is that, I think, if there's, there's a project proposed, and it's going to be, it's going to cause a lot of upheaval over a lot of years, you get pushback on starting it from the locals, once it gets explained to them?
No, it's, it's not even necessarily that. I mean, I don't, I don't think we've had a lot of instances where sewer or blue belt or cloud burst projects have been delayed. You know, in the popular imagination, there's a lot that we blame environmental impact statements on for, which is not necessarily the issue here. I'm just pointing out that what I spend my time worrying about is not, where's the 22nd project? It's how do we push all of them through the pipeline as quickly as possible? Some of that is just about having really good management, and I could not be more proud of the work that my agency has done in terms of managing its procurement process, right? We've cut our procurement times in half, just by good management internally.
Right.
But there are ways that city does, that the city does procurement. There are ways that, there are constraints on how we do design. One of the things that I think is fantastic about the Climate Strong Communities work is, as Elijah just said, it's precisely designed to get ready for when funding is available, right? We have the, we have the practice that we don't invest planning money until capital dollars are identified. But in a world where there's a lot of federal money out there or something, with something like Climate Strong, what we're able to do is go out and define projects, even if we don't know exactly where the money's coming from, but kind of making the bet that by the time, the year or two of design work is done, there's going to be a pot of money that we could apply for, right? And that actually saves a lot of time, and in fact, increases your likelihood of getting some of these grants, because rarely does the federal or state government put out a grant and say, yeah, and tell me in three years how you would like to spend this money. They really want to know much sooner than that.
Right. It, it, it sounds like kind of an executive function, or I, I'm, I'm missing something in what you're-
It is. And obviously, you know, we have to manage, and I am certainly doing everything I can to figure out how to manage-
Right.
-my agency as, as Elijah is, as Marad and Sudanahue with the Parks Department are, every day, how to manage as aggressively and as, as effectively as we can. I'm just trying to, as you said earlier, Mr. Chair, sharing the burden. So I appreciate that.
Right, right. Now, we can, we can certainly bring some about this at, over our next breakfast, okay? Over our next breakfast. And thank you. Thank you, Red. And for Assistant Commissioner Larson, you got any back to Local Law 31 of 2009 that I made reference to in my opening statement? You know, the administration is required to submit an updated report on the comprehensive wetlands protection strategy called for by this law. However, no update on the strategy provided in 2012. Okay, so the, so 2012 was filed in, in compliance with the law, but nothing else has come forward since. And rather than make you kind of just swim, I mean, like, you know, if you have an answer, fine. If it's one of these things where, you know, you want to get back to me on that or whatever, and I'll make a note to Mr. Cataldo, to, and also my staff, NABE. You know, this is a law, it's on the books, and it was passed in 2009, and you know, the first, you know, the first submission made it on time, and then hasn't been heard of, hasn't been heard from since. And that's more than a decade ago. I know you did the other things with the wetlands, whatever it was, but we didn't know if that was, it wasn't earmarked as a compliance document with, with, with the law. And so-
Well, if I may, I, I will just reiterate, I think it, what we might have said earlier that the wetlands management framework really was a building off, almost 10 years of work after that, that was inspired and included and identified in the wetlands strategy, that we then used as the foundation for the further roadmap, focusing on New York City parks, wetlands, in the, the wetlands management framework. So I will just, just wanted to highlight that, that many of the recommendations, and including addressing the need to develop better wetlands map was, were something that we continued to work on through getting US EPA funding, in numerous grants over consecutive years, building up to that wetlands management framework. So glad to follow up.
Yeah, and, and that's fine, but, and we certainly applaud that, but we ordinarily, you know, want the laws complied with in our own way, not your own way. That's kind of, you know, that's just how we do it, you know? But looks like you got all the ingredients there, or whatever, but it should be filed as appropriate. And if, you know, again, if you'd follow up with a more detailed strategy on, on, on doing that, like I said, I got, I got, I got, I got Robert texting away now, and I got, I got NABE taking notes or whatever, so that's fine.
Absolutely.
Okay, I certainly appreciate that. And to close out this panel, my esteemed co-chair, we'll, we'll, we'll do that.
Thanks so much, Chair Gennaro. Actually, before I go with my, my closing questions, we have been joined by Councilmember Gutierrez, who I think has a question too, so I'll turn it over to you.
And I'll be brief. I know you've been here for a little bit. How you doing, Commissioner? Good to see you. I got to quickly read through your testimony. I'll read it thoroughly afterwards. I'm not going to bring up Knickerbocker, because I think we talk about it often, but I will be following up with you on Knickerbocker. I'm curious about the, the project in South Jamaica with NICA in collaboration. Now, now I know the area in my district, you know, is not designated as an area with, you know, potentially extreme flooding, just based on your testimony. I know that, you know, it doesn't have that designation. My concern is Bodingen Houses in Williamsburg. And this is more because of the construction of the actual development, which is no basement in any of, of the buildings. And I really think it's, I don't know what the exact terminology is, but like, kind of where it is, they're around Bodingen it floods, but the actual buildings flood. And so every single lobby, even if it's, if it's not even a cloud burst, will flood. And so I'm curious, what, what is the communication with NICA like? What, what is something that I can do in this instance? Because it's not, it's, I think the problem is like the actual, but it is, you know, water that comes in from the street, as well as just like typical, typical rainwater. But, you know, they, they got some really good coverage in the city about a month ago, because of, like, this happens all the time. And so I'm just curious what your communication with NICA looks like overall, and some of these like infrastructure projects, and what are some, it's basically advice. I need advice here. And what are the, some of the things that I can be elevating? Because it is, it is a problem. And some of these, I mean, I represent Williamsburg Houses, it's the oldest development in Brooklyn, and it's just part of this aging, aging infrastructure that on its own is falling apart. And, you know, couple that with, you know, excessive rainfall, it's problematic. So if you could, if you got any advice for me, I would appreciate that. And that's it.
Well, so look, I, I, I will say, I think NICA's done a very good job of being very serious about resilience. As with everything at NICA, the resources are always far short of the actual need. But I think overall, if you look at the portfolio of NICA residences across the city, they are so much better prepared than they were 11 years ago at Hurricane Sandy. They've made a lot of progress. Some of it, and I, and I think this is an important concept that we have to recognize in terms of resilience, some of it is not about how do you keep everything dry, but it's actually about how do you bounce back, right? And so, for example, a lot of what NICA has invested money in is not to hold the water back entirely, but to make sure that nothing gets destroyed by the water. One of the, one of the real lessons from Hurricane Sandy was buildings that didn't have electricity, didn't have elevators, et cetera, for weeks and months, because critical components had been destroyed by the flooding. It's a nuisance to have flooding, as long as it's not sewage, as, as Councilmember Marcis pointed out. It's, it's more of a nuisance to have water, as long as it goes away. The, the top priority that I think NICA has wisely embraced is to make sure that when the water goes away, there aren't the lingering problems. That is not to say they have solved everything, and I don't think anybody at NICA would say that they have solved everything. I do think their sustainability and resilience team is really creative and thoughtful. And on the specific issue around the Baruchan Houses, I, I don't carry the details in my head. I'd be very happy personally to, to follow up with you, and perhaps even talk to NICA jointly.
Thank you. You are very confident in NICA, and yes, we will, we will follow up. Thank you so much. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Councilmember. And just two final questions, actually coming from Councilmember Sandy Nurse, who had to leave for Parks. Assistant Commissioner Councilmember Nurse's first question is, is Parks considering allowing experienced, large, community compost organizations like Big Reuse to compost on appropriate parkland sites?
Well, we do already have composting on parkland sites at, at certain locations. I don't know if perhaps Sarah Nielsen, my colleague, might want to address that in any, in any more detail.
Can you please raise your right hand?
Once I wrestle this chair. There we go.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth today?
Yes. Thank you for the question. So the question from Councilmember Nurse is about whether Parks is contemplating, you know, adding additional compost facilities? Is that correct?
Yep. Organizations, especially like Big Reuse, to compost on the, on appropriate park sites.
Right, right. So appreciate the question. This is definitely something that the agency has been talking about with sanitation, as far as, you know, managing their new compost need with the influx of, with their work. So I think it's something that the agencies are, you know, addressing together. We do know that there's such a huge demand of parks facilities for all of the park uses that we already have, all the ball fields, all of the children's activities, all of the many things that are already going on, in addition to, you know, new sports and things coming along, pickleball and all these various activities that everybody also wants to do on parks. As we've heard in this hearing today, there's also a tremendous discussion around, you know, what is the role that parks may or may not play as far as managing stormwater, and what about our tree canopy? And so I think, you know, we will be looking at the question of compost in the context of the many, many, many demands on, on the 30,000 acres that we have, and see what, what might be feasible, but also knowing that sanitation has, you know, facilities, and there's other city land that might be appropriate for those practices as well.
Thank you. And then the second question was, how is Parks increasing the, the practical application of composting, a stormwater management tactic on smaller neighborhood parks?
That's a terrific question. I'm not sure if I have the specifics on that one, and that might be one where we would need to talk with our gardening and maintenance folks to get like a more fulsome answer for you, although I have a feeling we're probably doing that, but I don't have the specifics for you.
Sure. I'll let Councilmember Nurse know too, and would be helpful to have more information on that point as well.
Absolutely. We can do that.
Thanks so much. That concludes the questions from our panel. All right, well, thank you so much to, to all of you. We really appreciate, and it was a long set of questions and testimony, but we very much All right, now we'll open it up to the public. I know that there was a lot of testimony up till now, so thank you all for your patience in waiting. What we'll do is we'll, we'll call up about three members of the public at a time for, for testimony. If you can, we'd urge you to keep your testimony to two minutes, and we'll start the clock as soon as you start speaking. So our first three panelists are-
Charisse Palermo, Lynn Kelly, and Robert Camacho. Charisse Palermo, Lynn Kelly, and Robert Camacho.
And, and while they're getting set up, I just want to make sure that someone from the mayor's office or from the administration is going to stay behind? Okay? Okay, so, all right. We got that covered, right? Okay. Duration, for the duration. Okay, good. Okay.
Why don't you start, Adam? Good to see you.
There were three names called, and there's just one of me.
Robert Monaco, Prospect Park Alliance, Lynn Kelly, Parks and Open Space Partners, and Adam Ganzner.
That's me.
Okay.
I'll just, I'll get started.
Why don't you get started?
Well, thank you to Councilmember Gennaro and Krishnan for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Adam Ganzner. I'm the Executive Director of New Yorkers for Parks. We lead the Playfair Coalition, which is over 400 parks and open space organizations, environmental organizations, infrastructure, et cetera, focused on our city's parks. Our city's parks are a backyard and sources of joy for all New Yorkers. They are also a critical, yet overlooked tool in New York City's fight to mitigate the effects of climate change. New York City has 30,000 acres of parkland, fully 14% of the city. These green spaces should be seen as essential infrastructure. Our parks, as you've heard today, collect stormwater, lower temperatures, clean air, and much more. They are the lungs of our city and bring joys, joy to our lives. But our parks can't provide these essential services and environmental benefits to New Yorkers if we don't maintain these green spaces. I know we aren't talking about the budget, but I think this is related. You know, we're talking about 5% to 15% cuts to the Parks Department, which will have devastating results for our parks and for New Yorkers and for the environment. These cuts would impact park workers, most importantly, reductions in park workers. We're talking about, right off the bat, with the 5% cuts, looking at 400 parks employment positions being eliminated. These are straight up operation, safety, cleanliness, and accessibility positions. Again, positions that take care of our trees, that clean out trash, keep trash out of drainage, clean out drainage, mow the lawns, things that have a direct impact on stormwater, cleaner, et cetera. We urge the council to fight these proposed cuts. Three years ago, the Parks Department was cut with, by similar numbers, roughly $80 million, and we saw the impacts of that immediately. The Parks Department and our parks descended into conditions that were the worst on record in 20 years by the Parks Department's own measure. Our parks have stepped up in crisis year after year. We've seen just recently storm surges and flooding, pandemic, we have medical tents in parks, and we have asylum seeker housing in our city's parks. They are critical tools for managing climate change, mitigating heat island effect, absorbing carbon dioxide and stormwater. We cannot afford to cut our park system, especially as our city has experienced record-breaking heat and flooding. Parks are not a luxury, they are critical infrastructure. We know that the path, we know the path of the Parks Department and parks' conditions for New Yorkers when the budget is cut. A lot of what we're talking about today is forward-thinking climate planning. Let's do the same with our parks. Instead of cutting them, let's invest in them. This administration and nearly every one of the council members has said that they agreed with 1% for the city budget for parks. Every New Yorker deserves that, deserves safe, clean, green, and beautiful open space. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you so much, Adam. Thank you so much, New Yorkers for Parks.
Thank you. I'm Corey Hassan. I'll be testifying on behalf of Lynn Kelly, who had to leave early. Thank you, Chairs Krishnan and Gennaro, and committee members, for having this important hearing, which is very timely, considering the citywide flooding on September 29th. I'm Lynn Kelly, and I'm the Executive Director of the New York Restoration Project and co-chair of NYC- Co-Chair of NYC Parks and Open Space Partners Coalition. Today, I'm testifying on behalf of the NYC Parks and Open Spaces, a coalition representing over 50 organizations that share ideas to address common challenges, amplify advocacy efforts, and offer technical assistance and guidance in service of an equitable and resilient park system for all New Yorkers. As the committee is aware, Mayor Adams has ordered all New York City agencies to reduce their spending, citing slowed revenue growth and financial strain due to the migrant crisis. While the coalition is truly sympathetic to the plight of the asylum seekers and understands the logistical challenges being faced by the administration, we refuse to believe that mass front, that mass budget cuts are the answer to a complex situation in which human beings and public lands are front and center. In fact, if the administration follows through with the proposed cuts of 15%, they could expect to see a devastating impact on our park system, which is still recovering from cuts made during COVID-19, and has fewer workers than it did before the pandemic. This austerity plan only furthers societal division during a time when we should be building community and ensuring the availability of critical services to new and current New Yorkers alike. In fact, the 15% cuts to parks negates the city's own climate resilience priorities, as laid out in Plan NYC, getting sustainability done. Goals in this plan range from creating natural-based stormwater managements, investing in NYC Green Infrastructure Program, to creating over 10 acres of new open space and achieving 30% tree canopy coverage. Achieving these goals are vital, not only to make our city more sustainable and equitable, but also to combat the impacts of climate change. The time to implement these measures has never been more critical. Climate change is changing our urban environment with summer heat waves and more frequent instances of massive rainfall, causing extensive flooding and damage to properties, infrastructure, and open spaces. And I'll leave it there, because I have more in the thing, but thank you for your consideration.
Thanks so much, Corey. Thanks so much, Lynn, and New York Restoration Project.
The next witnesses will be Heather Lubov, City Parks Foundation, Alia Sumro, New York League of Conservation Voters, and Emily Walker, Natural Areas Conservancy.
Hi, everyone. My name is Alia Sumro, and I'm the Deputy Director for New York City Policy at the New York League of Conservation Voters. Thank you, Chairs Krishnan and Gennaro, and members of the Parks and Environmental Committees for this timely hearing. I have submitted longer written comments. As co-founders of the Playfair for Parks Coalition, we stand with New Yorkers for Parks, DC 37, and over 400 coalition organizations to demand a city budget that gives parks the fair funding they deserve. Mayor Adams, Speaker Adams, and 44 other council members have already committed to funding 1% of the city budget to parks. NYLCV is also a member of the Forest for All NYC Coalition, which advocates for the city to equitably achieve 30% tree canopy by 2035. Lastly, we're members of the Rise to Resilience Coalition, calling for climate resilience. I bring this up because the goals of all three coalitions are connected to each other. Parks and green spaces make up 14% of the city's land. NYC Parks manages 53% of the total urban forest canopy in the city, and roughly half of the land managed by NYC Parks is directly on the water. Yet, New York City parks receive less than 1% of the city's budget. We cannot maintain our park system, increase our tree canopy, or improve our waterfront resiliency if we cut our parks budget. All three coalitions show that over 600 organizations in the city support parks, open space, tree canopy, waterfront, environmental justice, and more. We need long-term funding. This leads me to shift to the mayor's recently proposed city budget cuts. The citywide PEG cuts will be nothing short of devastating for our city's park system. They would directly undermine the goals set out in Plan NYC, getting sustainability done. From the extreme heat that we saw this summer, to the city's air quality emergencies and the heavy rainfall on the 29th, it showed the urgency of the climate crisis. NYLCV recognizes that climate resiliency and construction procurement, it takes a long time. We understand that, and we commend DEP and the rest of city government working to advance the goals. But in the short term, we have got to improve our city's response, emergency preparedness, notification, especially for basement apartment dwellers in the city. I know I'm out of time, so I really appreciate it, and I have submitted longer comments that, yeah, so thanks a lot for having this hearing. Thanks.
Thank you. My name is Emily Walker, and I am the Senior Manager of External Affairs at the Natural Areas Conservancy. Thank you to Chairs Krishnan and Gennaro and members of the committee for allowing me to speak today. In this era of climate instability, we believe that our parks, and in particular, our natural areas, play a tremendous role in protecting and fostering a more resilient city. When it comes to our natural areas, the data is clear. They contain up to a quarter of the existing canopy in NYC, but account for nearly 70% of the carbon stored and 83% of the carbon sequestered by trees across the city. They are almost 10 degrees cooler than our streets during extreme heat events. They prevent $4.8 million in hospital bills from pollution-induced illness annually. They provide $2.2 billion in recreational value, $1.1 billion in public health value, and they soak up as much stormwater as $580 million worth of new green stormwater infrastructure. Despite these benefits, the stresses on our natural areas are tremendous, and without appropriate public investments in their care, we stand to lose these assets entirely. We are deeply alarmed by the citywide budget cuts that were announced in September. The mandated 5% budget cuts now in effect will have a catastrophic impact on the ability of NYC Parks to implement much of its work, including critical care for our natural forested areas and wetlands. On Earth Day, the NAC stood proudly with Mayor Adams as he committed $2.4 million in baseline funding to formalize, maintain, and program over 300 miles of nature trails in our parks, which would unlock access to over 10,000 acres of crucial valuable, invaluable green space for New Yorkers. We are profoundly disappointed that the funding for this initiative, which had been prioritized in the 2023 Plan NYC report, will no longer be implemented. I also want to express our concern that the budget cuts mean that we are disinvesting in stewardship at a time when it will be needed most. One of NAC's trail maintainers is with us today in City Hall, and I just want to note that her work exemplifies the kind of care that we should be performing for NYC's land, and we're taking away crucial funding to help support that work. We applaud the council's efforts to examine the intersection of resiliency in our green spaces, but also believe that the urgency of this moment requires us to speak out about further constraints on the budget for parks. Parks and natural areas benefit the lives of every New Yorker, from longtime residents to our most recent arrivals. We understand that moments of crisis demand hard choices from our electeds, but we also believe that these choices should not come at the expense of shared resources that make our city more resilient and livable, and that provide pathways to good green jobs amid the worsening climate crisis. We call on our elected officials from every level of NYC's government to work together to restore the proposed budget cuts and prevent additional cuts to services that make our city stronger. Thank you.
I'm Katie Swab, testifying on behalf of Heather Lubov from City Parks Foundation. We are a nonprofit that encourages New Yorkers to use and care for their neighborhood parks and open spaces. Chairs Krishnan and Gennaro, members of the Joint Committee, thank you for having us today. I want to begin by expressing our strong support for Intro Number 1069. In a city with four superfund sites, including one of the largest in the nation, this is a common sense initiative. City Parks Foundation has firsthand experience with water contamination issues. In 2011, we designated Coney Island's Kaiser Park as a catalyst priority outreach site for community engagement. And by encouraging the community to conduct water testing, we revealed shocking levels of pollution in Coney Island Creek, ultimately leading to a lawsuit settlement and the creation of an environmental benefits fund. We now run our coastal classroom education program for middle schoolers in Kaiser Park, as well as at Inwood Hill Park, Bushwick Inlet Park, Halet's Cove, and Conference House Park, connecting children to their waterfronts while actively engaging in water testing efforts as an educational tool, working with partners like the Billy and Oyster Project. Our teams have an eye on the water, and we see that community members, young and old, swim regularly at these sites. Protecting our waterways is vital for the well-being of our communities, especially for our children. Additionally, we support Resolution Number 608, as the effects of climate change are rapidly threatening our city. Few New Yorkers can deny the absolute devastation caused by the many storms hitting our city. City Parks Foundation has been able to respond swiftly after the storms, mobilizing volunteers who can step in when the Parks Department is overwhelmed with service requests. After Superstorm Sandy, we mobilized 7,000 volunteers who planted beach grasses and other flood mitigation measures, but that's after the fact. It doesn't address the source of the problem. And although we support these essential initiatives, we know that they cannot succeed without proper funding. Mayor Adams' order for New York City agencies to reduce spending dangerously threatens our park system and necessary climate mitigation efforts. We cannot afford a repeat of pandemic-era funding cuts that harmed our parks. Climate change is here, and as a coastal city, flooding is a looming threat. Please join us in the Playfair Coalition in urging the administration to abandon these austerity measures and to uphold the mayor's promise to invest 1% of city budgets for parks. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I want to thank you for your support of Intro 1069 and Reso 608. And you were smiling the entire time you were giving your testimony, which is, we don't see all the time, but we appreciate it. Smiling is nice, you know, smiling is a nice thing.
The next witnesses will be Katie Denny Horowitz, Kay Webster, and Corey Hassan from the New York Restoration Project, the Sarah Roosevelt Park, and North Broadway Parks Alliance.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, especially you're still here. I really appreciate it. My name is Kay Webster. I'm from Sarah Roosevelt Park Community Coalition. It's a 40-year-old volunteer organization on the Lower East Side in Chinatown in New York City, an environmental justice area, and we're a Playfair member, and my park is just a short ways from here. I have a lot of things I wrote. I will say that green spaces are the first responders to severe climate impacts, impacts that we know are not going to get better. We know we must take desperate mitigation measures to forestall the consequences of extreme heat, extreme flooding, and die off of flora and fauna. We lived through the last austerity budget that New York went through in the 80s, and it wasn't good. And we see that starting to happen now. Trees don't live if you don't have somebody taking care of them. Heat island effect is real. Some people in my neighborhood do not have air conditioners because the electricity isn't, you can't do it in some tenements, you can't have an AC. We have homeless people who will never, ever have air conditioning until they're housed. Compost yards are mitigation. You can plant other plants that are more resilient. There are a lot of things we can do, but they all require a parks budget. And I got to tell you that I really appreciate what your comments, Councilmember Krishnan, because this is untenable. I mean, parks are the places where all neighborhoods come together. There are, there are resiliency centers. There, there are worker resiliency centers. If you don't pay parks employees a decent wage with a, with a real future, what do you expect them to do? So, I really thank you. Sorry, whatever.
Thank you.
Hello again. Good afternoon. My name is Corey.
Weren't you just here?
That's my stunt, I have a twin brother, so, yeah.
You couldn't change your shirt and put a hat on or something?
Yeah, I should have got the fake mustache.
All right.
I'm Corey Hassan, and I'm the Government Affairs Manager of the New York Restoration Project. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony again this afternoon, Chair Krishnan and Chair Gennaro. NYRP is a proud member of the Playfair Coalition, a coalition of 400 organizations across the city advocating for the city's park system. NYRP is also a member of Forest for All NYC and a founding members of Parks and Open Space Partners. We are here today in opposition to administrations' proposed austerity cuts of 15%, which would devastate the already chronically underfunded and understaffed New York City parks. Climate change is at our doorstep. Only 12 days ago, NYC was ravaged by flooding underscored the need for the city to invest in proven solutions and green infrastructure, such as parks, waterfronts, and open space. Parks can reduce water runoff by 90% and filter out as much as 95% of major pollutants. While the city continues to struggle with wetland loss, flooding, and erosion, NYRP's work with the Living Shoreline at Sherman Creek Park in northern Manhattan is creating wetlands and oyster habitats, which are protecting shorelines and providing natural defenses against flooding for the community. NYRP's investment in this critical green infrastructure also allows for public waterfront access while improving the ecological health of the park, something too rare in New York City, especially in underserved communities. These new wetlands are storing carbon and removing nitrogen from waters at surprisingly high rates. This means we're not only encouraging public access to the waterfront, but also cleaning the air and water. However, NYRP can't be in all the parks, and these proposed cuts will devastate our park system. This would amount to $75 million in reductions to an already strapped agency that has fewer workers today than it did before the pandemic. Parks have been the operating with an austerity budget for 50 years. An underfunded Parks Department means less maintenance workers and PEP officers who keep the parks clean and safe. NYRC's forested areas soak up as much as stormwater as $580 million worth of new green stormwater infrastructure. New York City's natural areas are 4 to 6 degrees cooler than the average temperature during extreme heat events. This saves lives. We once again thank you for hosting this important and timely hearing. Every New Yorker deserves safe and equitable access to parks, open space, and waterfronts. Thanks once again.
Thank you.
The next witnesses are Annie Carforo from WAC, Rosa Chandy from Gotham Park, and Ciara...
Yep.
Okay, there we go. Hi, thank you so much for holding this hearing. My name is Annie Carforo. I'm the Climate Justice Campaign Manager, representing WAC for Environmental Justice, a member of the Playfair Coalition. So, founded in 1988, WAC is a community-based organization in Harlem that has been fighting environmental racism at the city-state and federal levels. And due to historic disinvestment and policies that enable structural racism like redlining, our parks, green spaces, and access to the waterfront are not equitably distributed across the city. Access to green spaces is, on average, much lower in environmental justice neighborhoods that are already plagued by adverse health problems and high levels of pollution. Low-income communities have 21% less park space than higher-income neighborhoods in New York City, and any attempts to equalize this discrepancy fall short due to lack of agency funding. The proposed austerity cuts of 5% to 15% will further decrease the agency's ability to serve New Yorkers everywhere, but those that will suffer most are New Yorkers that live in environmental justice communities, who are disproportionately Black and Latinx, and who need green space and park space the most. I have an anecdotal example for this, coming out of WAC's work in East Harlem, which is a formerly redlined community that suffered years of neglectous investment and shortsighted planning. This has allowed severe racial, economic, and environmental disparities to proliferate. East Harlem has virtually no tree canopy, and a six-block stretch surrounding 125th Street received no new tree plantings this year and no anticipated tree plantings next year. When we inquired about this with the Parks Department, about this stark oversight, they told us that East Harlem is a hostile environment for baby trees, which lowers the success rate of plantings without extra maintenance, which they do not have funding for. When we inquired then about potential green infrastructure projects leveraging the Bond Act funding for the 125th Street corridor to help cool the environment in the absence of a tree canopy, their first response was a concern over maintenance and a lack of funding. This past summer was the hottest on record, and we can expect to see much worse in the coming years. New York City has the worst heat island effect in the country. I'm going to just wrap up right now, but that is, in neighborhoods like East Harlem, the temperatures can be even hotter than the city's average. We seem to be stuck in a vicious cycle where communities on the frontline of the climate crisis that have suffered the most systemic disinvestment are going to be hurt the most by austerity politics. If we're going to get serious about our response to extreme weather events, we need to make sure the departments trying to improve equity in our city are fully staffed and fully equipped to adapt to our changing climate. Thank you so much, and I will submit written comments.
Thank you so much. You may begin.
Hi, my name's Kira Kozier. I'm just a member of the public from District 40.
If you could just bring the mic a little closer to you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Can you hear me now? Is that better?
Yep.
I'll start again. My name's Kira Kozier. I am a member of the public from District 40. Sorry if this is a little chaotic. I'll submit better written comments. I support everything that others have already said. I'm here to advocate for a minimum of 1% of the city budget for the park system and oppose the mayor's austerity measures, cutting the Parks Department budget. I'm also here because of climate resilience planning, all of those bills that I, the numbers I don't... of those bills that I, the numbers I don't remember, but the ones that James Gennaro has done, I really support those. And I'm here because of the disproportionate effects of environmental injustice that we're just spoken to. We all know that, with our common sense, that parks are good for New Yorkers. For one, parks reduce tragically high asthma rates, especially in vulnerable neighborhoods like the South Bronx. And after living through Hurricane Sandy over a decade ago and seeing the flooding the other week, it's clear that we need urgent support and funding for our parks as fortifications against climate change, as you said, Krishnan, and air pollution, water pollution, and more. Instead of reiterating the words of others who I agree with, I'd also like to remind you why we need funding for parks as crucial spaces to support human joy, health, and well-being. Parks are places as us New Yorkers go to for solace when we're sad, to host baby showers when we're full of joy, to enjoy picnics, birthdays, barbecues, graduation parties, and other celebrations when we have no other spaces at home. Parks are where we get married. Parks are where everyone, regardless of income, can spend time. They're where asylum seekers and our unhoused neighbors go to rest. Parks are places for New Yorkers to burn off steam by exercising. Our parks have inspired countless paintings of mine and artworks of others, adding value to the city through art sales and cultural wealth. Parks are where New Yorkers can finally take a breather. Parks are where some babies first learn to walk, where our children learn to play and interact with each other. Parks are not superfluous to New York. They are the lifeblood, protective skin, lungs, and heart of New York. They're where New Yorkers sit to expand their minds. They're where entrepreneurs and students meet to invent and brainstorm new inventions that help power our city and advance New York. I'm not asking just for 1%. I think that many other advanced cities in this country have a budget of approximately 3% to 5%, so I think that 1% is honestly the bare minimum. And any advocacy that you guys can do to stop Mayor Adams would be really wonderful. And my last thing is that our last council and Mayor Adams funded the NYPD $10.8 billion for our annual budget, and I just think that there is money in our budget to fund our parks system that we so desperately and dearly need. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your heartfelt testimony. We appreciate it. Thanks for your support for my bills. And at WEACT, say hi to Peggy Shepherd and Lonnie Portis for me.
Our next witnesses are Isabel Friedman of NRDC, Andrea Andretti, Randall's Island Park Alliance, and Tyla Tabba, Waterfront Alliance.
My name is Isabel Friedman. I'm from the Natural Resources Defense Council, and I'm here to support Resolution 608, which urges the state legislature to pass a bill creating a permanent voluntary New York City floodplain buyout program, and the local administration to allocate significant funds from the 2022 Environmental Bond Act, so that money is available promptly, without delay, after the next storm surge. Flooding is the most common and costly natural disaster in the United States, and as with everything fated by climate change, will only get worse. New York needs to continue investing in its long-term resilience strategy and invest in a fully fledged floodplain buyout program. By giving homeowners the opportunity to relocate, such a program would reduce the risk to non-coastline properties and first responders, as well as save taxpayers from having to fund repeated home repairs and public infrastructure projects. Post Sandy, New York State spent $276 million to buy out 721 homes in Staten Island and Long Island. At the time, New York's makeshift floodplain buyout program faced significant criticism, with residents having to wait up to five years before getting paid out. This delay meant that the impacts of the hurricane lasted much longer for people who depended on the money coming in from the government rather than rebuilding their homes. To its credit, the Adams Administration's recent sustainability plan describes that a voluntary housing mobility and land acquisition program would help residents assess their options and make the appropriate decision on their next steps. In acknowledging that repeated flooding can no longer be addressed with halfway measures, Plan YC took a crucial step in citing a buyout plan as a long-term adaptation strategy, not a reactionary measure taken for short-term recovery. Offering residents the opportunity to move from the place they call home raises understandable challenges. However, the unavoidable impacts of climate change will require focusing on floodplain buyouts as a key adaptation strategy. Investing in such a program now will help communities determine the most effective solutions before the next storm shows up at their front door. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Say hi to Eric Goldstein for me.
I miss his signs as well.
What's that?
I miss his little handmade signs as well. I'm a bad replacement.
Please, next witness.
Good afternoon, Chairs Krishnan and Gennaro, and members of the committee. My name is Andrea Doretti, Communications Manager at Randall's Island Park Alliance, and I am delivering this testimony today on behalf of RIPA. Randall's Island Park is located in the east river between East Harlem, the South Bronx, and Historia Queens. RIPA is dedicated to cultivating and upholding the park, offering a range of robust public programs, educational opportunities to all who visit. Parks are communal spaces that foster joy, unity, and a sense of belonging among a diverse group of populations that make up the fabric of New York City. They are where families gather, children play, and individuals find solace in nature's embrace. Yet the challenges faced by our parks extend far beyond underfunding. When budgets are cut, the burden often falls on dedicated partners to preserve the status quo. The allocation for parks not only falls significantly short of the recommended 1% of the city's budget, but also introduces the imminent danger of a 15% reduction of park funding, placing additional strain on already limited resources allocated for maintenance and programming. It is imperative that parks are not merely perceived as nice to have, but rather a critical component of people's lives and well-being. Parks are essential. They are the cornerstone of our communities, nurturing mental health and much-needed intermissions between a bustling urban landscape. Allocating 1% of the city's budget would demonstrate a commitment to the well-being of our communities and environment. It would ensure that parks have the necessary resources to flourish, benefiting every New Yorker and resident and visitor alike. A well-maintained and adequately funded park system is an investment in the city's future. The impact of these decisions reach far beyond parks' boundaries, not only affecting those who need these spaces, but those of us who support them. It is organizations like RIPA who work tirelessly to make these spaces accessible and vibrant for all. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Krishnan and Chair Gennaro, and the councilmembers for the opportunity to testify. Also, thank you to the staff, Abby and Greg, and thank you to MOC EJ for sticking around, Marty. My name is Tyler Tabba. I'm the Senior Manager for Climate Policy at the Waterfront Alliance. We spearhead the Rise to Resilience Coalition, a coalition of more than 100 organizations advocating to make climate resilience an urgent policy priority, and also are a proud member of the Playfair Coalition. While this hearing was scheduled before the extreme rainfall on September 29th, I think we're yet again reminded why it's so important for New York City to continue to invest in climate resilience. And the theme for my testimony today is that climate risks in our region do not operate in silos, rather they are exacerbated and compounded by other climate risks. We're experiencing coastal flooding, inland flooding, extreme heat, and we should meet this moment by promoting solutions that span across the range of climate stressors in our region. And so this oversight hearing, bringing together parks and resilience, does exactly that, addressing parks as a solution that spans across climate stressors across our region. We need to integrate more resilient features into park designs, upgrades, and retrofits. However, we also have to consider the operations and maintenance funding required to keep up with the existing and new infrastructure. I think that's a really important thing, and maybe not often sexy to talk about, but operations and maintenance is really important. In response to the city's commitments to climate resilience outside of parks, Waterfront Alliance has long called on the city to develop a comprehensive plan for climate resilience investments and priorities. We're pleased to see MOC EJ kick off the Climate Strong Communities Program. Although it's only detailing six neighborhoods so far, we encourage the administration to continue to expand their reach and engagement across all five boroughs. And on the notion of comprehensive planning, I would be remiss not to mention the Army Corps Harbor and Tributary Study. Waterfront Alliance and the Rise to Resilience Coalition have long been advocating for a comprehensive approach from the Army Corps, really since the plan's inception. We are at a critical inflection point with hats right now, where the Corps' tentatively-selected plan falls short of addressing multiple flood hazards, and we've submitted comments along with 45 other organizations in the Coalition, and appreciate the level of support and alignment from the city in particular. And as soon as possible, call for the city and the state to send a letter to the Army Corps Headquarters invoking Section 8106 of the Water Resources Development Act of 2022, and happy to talk to any members of the council, although it's just one member up here right now, about the Army Corps at any time, so please don't hesitate to reach out for a briefing. I have a lot more in my written testimony that I'm not going to have time for, but thank you for holding this testimony, or holding this hearing and allowing us to testify.
Thanks so much.
And the final witness is Anieto Henville from the Seaton Falls Park Coalition.
One more time? No? No one? Okay.
On Zoom, Emily Maxwell, Glenn Bolofsky, Leslie Garcia, and Natasha Sidota.
Great. I will go ahead and get started. I will be very brief. It has been a long hearing and one that I appreciate very much. Thank you so much for holding it. My name is Emily Maxwell. I'm the Director of the City's Program at the Nature Conservancy in New York. Thank you so much for holding this joint hearing. I will make a few high-level remarks and will submit something in writing. New York City cannot be the resilient city that it needs to be without a robust, equitable, and well-maintained park system. And this means at least 1% of the city budget for New York City parks. New York City can also not be the resilient city it needs to be without all lands, including public and private land beyond parks, maximizing permeability and vegetative cover. And rather than repeating what so many of my colleagues have said today, which has been terrific, and I couldn't agree with more, I will make a couple of key points that I think are unique. One is that oftentimes when we talk about the Parks Department, we talk about it being responsible for 14% of land in New York City with less than 1% of the budget. I respectfully would say they are responsible for so much beyond that. The tree cover that they care for extends to over 53% of our city, and the Parks Department, through its oversight and management and response to street tree requests, literally can touch down on any block in New York City. So I think we need to understand how broad their jurisdiction actually is, and to fund them concomitantly with that to ensure the resilience of all blocks in New York City. The second thing I'll say, and I'll step outside of my role as a person who advocates trees, although I do, we need many types of adaptation to achieve resilience, and green infrastructure has been mentioned several times. Our city has a million buildings. Only about 730 of them have green roofs. And yet, last year, the green roof tax abatement program that incentivizes green roofs on private property was allowed to expire, and we need an act of the state legislature to renew it, and I would encourage council to...
Time expired.
So as a proud member of Playfair and Forest For All NYC, we join the advocates here today to call for full funding of New York City's parks, critical infrastructure, and a steady investment in a robust workforce to keep the city green and healthy for all. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Now, thank you so much. I'd like to thank Chairman James Gennaro and Chair Krishnan as well, the central staff, and everyone at the council for their hard work on this very, very important matter. I want to strongly support Intros 1069 and 0608. We need to have a plan to buy out people who are in bad areas where the city needs to do remediation. That's a common sense bill, and so is the other one, simply to let us know about things that are in our water that are not healthy for us. So we want to strongly support those bills. Want to compliment the council's leadership here today, as well, again, as Chairman Gennaro and Krishnan, simply because these things are of the moment and are in dire need. So thank you very, very much for helping to take care of our great city.
Thank you, Glenn, as always. It's always good to see you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Same here.
Leslie Garcia, Natural Areas Conservancy.
Hi, hello. So my name is Leslie Garcia, and I'm just speaking on behalf of the public and the personal effect on the budget cuts and the defunding of parks. So as a young professional passionate about parks and resilience see through natural area restoration, my time working with Natural Air Conservancy alongside with New York City Parks, I have faced a hurdle due to the budget cuts impacting jobs availability in my desired field. Despite this, I proactively sought out internships and volunteer opportunities to gain experience and networking within the industry. I engaged in courses to enhance my skills and knowledge while also connecting with mentors who provide the guidance and advice. I remain persistent believing in the value of my passion and dedication will eventually, with eventually securing a fulfilling role that will align with my aspirations in park and natural areas restoration. The impacts of trail funding being cut has been profoundly felt by the aspiring young professionals like myself, who are eager to work in natural area management. This reduction has created a notable setback, stripping away a vital pipeline to full-time employment opportunities. The trail funding not only supported the conservation and management of natural areas, but also provided a crucial platform for young talent to gain someone's unexperienced mentorship and skill development. Thank you.
And the final witness is Natasha Sidota.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Natasha Sidota. I'm the Community Storage and Operations Director at Gowanus Canal Conservancy. I'll keep my testimony brief. We're a proud member of the Forest For All Coalition and the Playfair Coalition, and I'm here to echo many of my colleagues in that we would like to express support for the tree canopy as essential green infrastructure. And although this hearing is not about the budget, that we need this budget to prioritize equitable management of our shared public space and its maintenance. I'll talk a bit about Gowanus specifically. Many of our colleagues have talked about the record-breaking heat in addition to the massive rainfall and flooding, which severely affected Gowanus in so many ways, including damaging local businesses and homes, helping public transit, overflowing our combined sewer system. And so this underscores the need for our city to continue investing in parks and open space and proven green infrastructure solutions, including rain gardens and street trees. In Gowanus, we take care of over 670 young trees throughout the past decade, and we work with a network of volunteers who water, weed, prune, and remove litter and debris, but they will always need maintenance that cannot be done by those volunteers. Many of those, you already know, including structural pruning, sidewalk repair, and basic species control. And we appreciate the city's efforts to leverage federal and state funding for resilience and infrastructure, but we continue to need the council to advocate for 1% for parks and ensure that trees in our parks are able to provide these essential social and ecological infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much for coming to our hearing today. These are the diehards who are staying. We appreciate that. Yeah, we have gift bags for you as you leave for being the last ones. I'd like to thank my co-chair, Councilmember Chairman Krishnan, and all the staff that worked on the hearing, and all of you that really make it into a hearing, because without you, we're not hearing anything. So appreciate that, and great working with Shaker. And with that said, this hearing is adjourned. I'll give my co-chair the final word.
Just to say thank you so much, Chair Gennaro. Thank you to everyone who stayed for all your advocacy every day. This is an issue that is only... This is an issue that is only getting more urgent as we've heard today. And I think we speak for both Chair Gennaro, myself, and our whole council that we are very proud to work with you all in this and to keep fighting together to protect our city from climate change and appreciate the testimony today and look forward to our continued work together. So thank you all so much. Hearing is now closed. Do you want to gavel out? All right. We're now closed.